The House will come to order. Messages from the Senate.
Message from the Senate, Madam Speaker, I hereby announce the passage by the Senate of the following Senate file herewith transmitted, Senate File Number One. The message is signed Thomas S. Bodden, Secretary of the Senate.
First reading of Senate files.
First reading of Senate File Number One, a bill for an act relating to higher education. Pursuant to Article Four, Section Nineteen of the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, Niska moves that the rule therein be suspended and in urgency be declared and that the rules of the House be so far suspended so that Senate File Number One be given its second and third readings and be placed upon its final passage.
I call on Representative Niska to explain the motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. This is the Higher Education Budget Bill. It was posted, the language that we're taking up today was posted actually on May 23rd, and this has been passed by the Senate. We need to take it up to finish our work here today. I urge members to support the motion.
I recognize a member from Hennepin, Representative Long.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I also urge members' support.
There being no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Aye.
The motion prevails. The clerk will give the bill its second reading.
Second reading, Senate File Number One.
Second reading. The clerk will report the bill.
Senate File Number One, an act relating to higher education.
I recognize the author from Benton, Representative Wolgamont, to explain the bill.
Well, thank you so much, Madam Speaker and members. I'm very pleased to present to you Senate File One, House File Six, which is the Higher Education Finance and Policy Bill. This bill is the hard-negotiated conclusion of our bipartisan bicameral agreement between myself and our respective conferees led, of course, by my fellow co-chair, Representative Marion Rarick, and our Senate counterpart, Chair Omar Fatae. And I'm really proud to bring this bill forward to you members because despite our differences, despite having different ways that we each wanted to get at the problems facing higher education in Minnesota, all of us did our absolute best to put the needs of Minnesota's students first, and that's what's reflected in this bill. Our biggest challenge going into it was having to tackle the $239 million deficit in the state grant program. But I'm proud that in working together through a combination of cuts and levers, we were able to backfill that state grant program, which is going to do so much to making sure that Minnesota's students can attend the college of their dreams to get the degree to pursue their careers. That's a big victory in this bill, and I'm really proud of that. I'm also proud that we were able to protect the North Star Promise Program, which as I'm sure you know is the last dollar program that students from families making $80,000 or less are eligible for to make sure that every student in Minnesota, regardless of your economic background, is able to afford to go to college here in Minnesota. That's another big victory that we have in this bill of putting students first. One last thing I'd like to share with you before I hand it over to my co-chair, Madam Speaker, that I'm very proud of is that we were able to work together to achieve an $8 million increase in the fostering independence grants to ensure that all of our foster youth in the state of Minnesota are able to obtain a post-secondary degree. Those are a few of the highlights of this bill that puts students first. As I mentioned before, there are some tough decisions that had to be made to reach this agreement, and just like I mentioned when this bill first came off the House floor, the bill would look a lot different if co-chair Eric were the full chair of the Higher Education Committee. The bill would probably look a lot different if I were the full chair of the Higher Education Committee, but here we are in a tie. Chair Eric and I worked together the best that we could to achieve our goals and put students first. That's what this bill reflects, and I'll leave it at that for now, Madam Speaker, and I'm honored to turn it over to my co-chair, Representative Marion Rarick.
I recognize a member from Wright, Representative Rarick.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Well, members, this is a $4 billion bill to take care of students so they can go to college and we can have a great workforce, and we achieved some amazing things. We left this floor with a zero on a zero target. We went into the Senate, and when we get into negotiations, we had $22 million and $4.5 million in the tails, and we took that $22 million and started to fill a hole that was $239 million projected hole in the state grant program. So between that, and we actually cut almost $35 million more and put into the state grant program, and yes, we actually were able to take care of the fosters too because the foster kids are really the ones that really, really need it because they have nothing. So we were able to add another $8 million to the fostering independence grant program so that they can get taken care of. So we took care of the state grant program. We changed, we turned that $239 million hole, projected hole, into a $20 million surplus with just $22 million of extra money because we did cut nearly $35 million, took care of the fosters. So that's the biggest things that are in the bill, and I'm sure you've got the bill in front of you. You can see exactly what we cut. But the one thing that I am disappointed in is that we didn't get to the regents election, and there's really no reason why we couldn't have done the election of the regents. And when I look at state history, there's only been four times in the entire state history where we haven't elected regents. And again, there's absolutely no reason to not elect the regents. So I was incredibly disappointed about that, and Madam Speaker, I'll leave it at that for now, and I'll have some more to say about that when we come to our discussion.
There are no amendments at the desk. The clerk will give the bill its third reading.
Third reading, Senate File Number One.
Third reading. Further discussion to the bill. I recognize a member from Hennepin, Representative Coulter.
I will thank you, Madam Speaker. I want to, first of all, just thank everyone involved with this bill for your diligent work on it. I think we negotiated the actual bill almost entirely in good faith, which is like pretty good for this place, and this budget does represent, I think, a sincere compromise with the Senate. It does resolve, I think, some of the bigger shortfalls in the original House bill, in particular the cuts to the Student Parent Support Initiative, and as Chair Eric mentioned, needed funding for fostering independence grants while completely closing the gap on the state grant program. I think looking forward, we do need to have a serious conversation about how we best support all of our students into the future, and that conversation needs to start right now because what comes from it will decide who gets an education in Minnesota and who doesn't, and this conversation is only going to become more urgent. Madam Speaker, Pell Grants have been foundational for low-income families to achieve the dream of a college education for generations, but they are also the basis of the state grant program and the North Star Promise Program. If the budget that Republicans in Congress are hell-bent on getting through comes to pass, more than 70,000 Minnesota students could see their Pell Grants slashed or lost completely, and this burden would fall especially hard on folks going to school part-time, folks who are very often just trying to do their best to balance work and family and going to school or often going back to school. If Pell Grants are slashed like they are in the bill that the very people who represent MSU Mankato, St. Cloud State, Southwest Minnesota State, and Bemidji State voted for, those of us in this room are going to feel it when we have to look at a massive hole in our budget, but more importantly, students will feel it when they are left with two deeply depressing choices: take on more debt that, oh, by the way, Congress wants to make it harder for you to pay off, or simply not get an education. That means not only fewer Minnesotans doing the jobs that we know we need more of, but more than that, it means fewer Minnesotans learning. And listening to what some folks have said, including some in this room, you'd be forgiven for thinking that's the goal. To hear some people tell it, the value of education only extends as far as students can be cogs in a machine. Now, I want to be clear that learning marketable skills is absolutely part of the value of education, but so is learning how to learn, how to build and strengthen skills, how to adapt, how to think critically about what's in front of you. In other words, a very real, very important purpose of getting an education is to not be stupid, and just so there's no doubt, that does not require a college degree. We all know brilliant people who don't have a degree and some pretty stupid ones who do. But when the value of education is reduced down to only what makes people money, when we kill off opportunities to learn for the sake of learning because it's something someone doesn't think is important, or it's done the way someone doesn't think it should be or where it should be, we kill off creativity, we kill off potential, we kill off the fundamental uniqueness that makes human beings so special, and all we end up with is more stupid people.
Further discussion to the bill. I recognize a member from Hennepin, Representative Robbins.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. I appreciate a lot of the things in this bill, and I'm particularly glad that we were able to fill the hole in the state grant program, and I know it took a lot of hard work on both sides, and I appreciate my colleagues and all the staff on both sides who helped us get there. That will materially matter for students across our state who went through a troubling time this year when the state grant hit the hole. People who had already been promised money had their awards pulled back, and it really was a very frustrating decision or situation for your constituents, all of our constituents. So I'm very thankful that we could get that done. To Chair Rarick's point, I'm very disappointed that we did not do the region election. Members, we had the Joint Committee on March 18th where we put forward our recommendations so that this body would have a joint convention and do our constitutional duty to elect four regents to the Board of the University of Minnesota. That is a legislative responsibility, and instead of getting that done since March 18th, we have continued to ignore that responsibility up into this special session, and what's going to happen is we are ceding our power to the governor, and he is going to appoint the regents. That is not acceptable, members. On either side of this aisle, we should be doing our constitutional duty to elect four members of the Board of Regents. The Board of Regents is meeting next week to put together the budget for the university for the coming year, and we will not have had input on that because we will not have sent regents to that meeting. So I'm very disappointed that that is something that we ceded our legislative power to the governor, and I hope that we rectify that when we come back next year. The governor's appointments will stand unless we take back our legislative responsibility and appoint, elect regents next year in a joint convention, which we can do. Otherwise, his appointments stand for two years. So when we come back in 2026, I hope we do that first on the agenda. I'm also very pleased that we took care of the foster kids in the fostering independent grant program, but one of my concerns, members, as we go back and think about the budget and the region election, is we have very little oversight of the University of Minnesota. As our former colleague Jean Palowski used to say, "Grab them by the budget and don't let go," because we cannot tell them what to do in policy. Budget is our only tool. And the U proposed, and this will be voted on next week affecting all of our constituents, that they proposed a 6.5 tuition increase for next year, 6.5%, and a 7% cut across the board in academic programs. Meanwhile, they have incredibly increased the expenses in their central administration, and that is why we need regents to provide some oversight over there. So President Cunningham, when she joined, she's getting an annual base salary of $975,000, and over the next five years, she's going to make another $675 in bonuses and incentives on top of an annual salary of 975. The new EVP of Finance, his name is Mr. Goldenen, he got a base salary of $750,000, and over the next five years, he's going to make another $550,000 in bonuses and incentives. Myron Franz, who was the last SVP of Finance, made $436,000 in his role as an SVP. They doubled the salary of the new EVP of Finance in just their budget increase. I don't know why they're doing that. And then the former SVP left and became a consultant to the U, and now he's made $961,000 as a consultant. The new provost, who's going to be voted on next week, base salary $675,000. Members, they are raising tuition on the students in our state, 6.5% to cover this, and I know that we need to be competitive. I want the U to be successful. We have incredibly talented professors and administrators over there, but the administration has gotten top-heavy, and we are ceding our power to the governor by not electing regents and not dealing with this in the budget for the University of Minnesota. So I'm thankful for the good work that was done on some cuts and on filling the state grant, but I just want members to understand the impact that these tuition increases are going to have on affordability of higher ed in our state. Thank you, members.
Further discussion to the bill. I recognize a member from Wright, Representative Rarick.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Well, thank you, Representative Robbins. You were a great ally defending the House position. We did a great job. I want to talk a little bit more about the University of Minnesota. Thank you for teeing that up. So I have great concerns too, and we know that they have autonomy. They were here before the state was here, so they are a landright institution, and they predate statehood. So what does that mean? It means that we have very limited ability on what we ask them or tell them or order them to do. So we do have the purse strings, and I will say that they get $1.5 billion in this budget. They get zero increase in O and M, and we actually did cut some from some of their specials and some of their riders. But I did do a data request, and I was really shocked when I got the information back. I said this in committee, kind of at the end when we were talking about the U, but the 100th salaried person at the University of Minnesota as of right now makes $354,000, the 100th person. I was given data from 23, from Menkogee. Now, they've changed their name, but I still call them Menkogee, and that data showed that 2,169 employees in that year made more than the governor. Yeah, somebody behind me said, "What?" And I said, "Yeah." Over 2,000 employees in 23 made more than the governor, and I guarantee you, they're not making less today. And as Representative Robbins said, the University of Minnesota is going to be raising potentially tuition by 6.5%. That's going to go to the regents. Why are the regents important? Let's circle back to the regents, and we have obdusated our responsibility. That is one of the few things that we have to have some say at the University of Minnesota, and we just threw it out the window. We don't care. I have tried. My husband has tried in the Senate. We've tried here in the House. Representative Robbins has tried to get us to do the regent elections, and for some reason, I'm not going to abscribe motives, but for some reason, it is an absolute no. Even Senator Fatae called me and said, "Hey, can we please do..." Chair Fatae was asking me, "Can we please do the regents?" We had that list come to us in the middle of March, and we sat here on it and did nothing with it. It was so important to Representative Robbins and I and to all of us on this side of the aisle that, yes, Representative Robbins and I did not sign the conference committee report, and we did not take this bill up on the last day of session because we wanted to do our responsibility, our legislative responsibility, our constitutional responsibility, and elect four regents. Why? Because we needed four new regents to actually look at the budget, and we had some great ones picked out. They were really, really, really successful for many, many years in finance and law and other things that could have actually taken a hard look at a $5 billion annual budget at the University of Minnesota. And are they top-heavy? Oh, yeah. Yeah, they're top-heavy. But we're sitting here on our hands. We're not going to do regional elections. I have no idea why, but here we are. We will not have four new regents that we select. The governor's going to pick them. How many times has that happened in all of state history? Four. It happened in 1933. Then in 1935, the legislature came in and elected three of the four governor picks. In 1937, it happened again. I don't know what was happening in 1933 and '37, a little chaotic in the world right then. So then the legislature rejected all of, all four of the governors' picks in 1939. In 1973, it happened again, and this time in 1975, all four of the governors' picks were elected. It happened again in 2001. What was happening in 2001, guys? Four of the five governors' picks were elected in 2003 by the legislature. It's only happened four times. Now it's happened five. Now, I know, I know that in our 201, here in the legislature, we have 100 Republicans and 101 Democrats. I know very well the numbers, and here we sit. We could have done it today, but we're not going to do it today because we cannot get agreement across the aisle. So I am incredibly disappointed that we are not doing the region selection. I am going to vote for this bill because this bill is a very good bill. This bill closes the huge gap that were really affecting students and families. We prioritize students and families over anything else. We did the deepest dive, I think, that has ever been done in the higher ed budget. We made every single group and entity come in and present, even if they only got $90,000. Thank you, former Chair Mariani, who came in and presented because he gets $90,000 in the biennial for his little nonprofit, and he came in and also presented, and I gave him a gold star because he actually had some, the parameters that we all now talk about because we talked about this first in higher ed. We looked at their 990. We looked at what the CEO made. We looked at what all the other employees made, how many of them were above the governor or not, how much of their money went to fundraising and other types of things. So we looked at all that, and he presented exactly what he does. And interestingly, the Senate had that as a cut. So the Senate Democrats cut former Chair Mariani's nonprofit money of $90,000. We did not because we actually had done the work over here in the House, and we had vetted everything. We did, however, cut money that was going to Lutheran Social Services because that CEO made $420,000, and their top 10 people made more than the governor. We cut that. So we did the hard work. We did the hard budget work. We looked at every single thing and looked under every cushion that we could find in that couch to try to make those students whole. That's what we did. That's why we cut 30, nearly $35 million and took quite a bit of the $22 million that we got, extra spending, and put it into the state grant program. We also dialed back some parameters that were just causing money to go out like a fire hose, and so we dialed those back so that we had a more even money going out. Because I told you, $239 million was the equivalent to one entire year's worth of state grants. That's how big the hole was. So we fixed that. We fixed it through adding new money, and we actually changed some of the policy so that that didn't happen again. So we did some really good, some really good hard work. I really, really, really wish we had done regents, and I know I heard my husband say it over in the Senate. He said the exact same thing because we both have been working really hard to try to find good, qualified regent candidates that could do a really good job to do what we cannot do. They are the governing body of the University of Minnesota. So thank you, Madam Speaker, and with that, I ask for a green vote.
I recognize Representative Wolgamont.
Well, thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, members, for the discussion on this bill. Madam Speaker, before I give my closing remarks on the bill, I want to share some words of gratitude. I want to thank each and every one of the members of the Higher Education Committee for showing up, for asking questions, for, as Rep. Robbins said, as my predecessor, Jean Palowski, would say, "We showed up, we grabbed them by the budgets, we didn't let go, and we had some really great accountable hearings." So thank you to each of the members on the committee. I'd specifically like to thank Vice Chair Nathan Coulter for all of his hard work and leadership, being former high-red researcher really was a great advantage, and thank you for all of your leadership throughout the session and for putting this bill together. I also want to give big thanks and credit to the incredible hard work of our staff who made this happen, our nonpartisan staff, Nathan Hopkins and Ken Savery, the Republican partisan staff, were terrific to work with, Lori Cousinow, Ben Freese, and James Cook, and I want to give a humongous thank you to my DFL partisan staff for all their support and hard work, Sean Herring, Evelyn Weiner, Drew Jones, as well as our committee interns, Bobby Granquist and Jacob Bloom, who's up here tonight, closing out his internship strong. Each and every one of you played a really important part in the committee work and in the session and in the hearings, and it's all that hard work that has led to the bill that's before you and the great things that it's going to accomplish for Minnesota students. And that's what I want to close with, Madam Speaker. That's exactly what this bill is about, Minnesota's students. Here in the state of Minnesota, we have three incredible structures for higher education. We have the University of Minnesota system. We have the mid-state colleges and universities. I'm really honored to represent St. Cloud State, St. Cloud Technical Community College. I've seen firsthand the impact that's had on my community as well as Minnesota's private colleges and universities, and we want to make sure that every student, no matter who you are, no matter what your background is, no matter what your passion is, no matter what you want to do to achieve your dreams, we want to make sure that you get to go to the school that you want to pursue your career, to make your dreams come true, and to bring the best out of yourself. That's what this bill does, and that's why I ask for your green vote. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
There's no further discussion. The clerk will take the roll. The clerk will call the name of the member participating remotely.
Olson.
Senate File One, Olson votes yes.
Olson votes aye.
The clerk will close the roll. There being 95 ayes and 36 nays, the bill is passed and its title is agreed to. Messages from the Senate.
Message from the Senate, Madam Speaker. I hereby announce the passage by the Senate of the following Senate file herewith transmitted, Senate File Number Seventeen. The message is signed by Thomas S. Bodden, Secretary of the Senate.
First reading of Senate bills.
First reading, Senate File Number Seventeen, an act relating to state government establishing a biennial budget for jobs, labor, and economic development. Pursuant to Article Four, Section Nineteen of the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, Niska moves that the rule therein be suspended and in urgency be declared and that the rules of the House be so far suspended so that Senate File Number Seventeen be given its second and third readings and be placed upon its final passage.
I recognize Representative Niska to explain the motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. This is the Jobs, Labor, and Economic Development Budget Bill. It's been part of the bicameral bipartisan working group, and I believe the version that we are looking at now, it was posted on the 8th, and I urge members to support it.
I recognize a member from Hennepin, Representative Long.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I too urge members' support.
There being no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. The clerk will give the bill its second reading.
Second reading, Senate File Number 17.
Second reading. The clerk will report the bill.
Senate File Number 17, an act relating to state government establishing a biennial budget for jobs, labor, and economic development.
I recognize a member from Ramsey, Representative Pinto, to explain the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members, the bill before us funds the Department of Employment, Economic Development, Department of Labor and Industry, Explorer Minnesota, the Film Board, Bureau of Mediation Services, several other agencies as well. Been grateful for the chance to, to co-lead the charge in getting those agencies funded. This is a, a good bill that will provide, as I say, funding for those agencies. It strengthens some, some protections for workers and for employers, I should say. I'll get a chance to talk more about that. And it's, this was a significant process, making it through and negotiating with the Senate. Folks may remember that we had funds that went off the House floor to fund competitive grant programs and were not planning to fund direct appropriations. The bill is coming back with a significant number of those direct appropriations, as Chair Baker and I worked to, are working to reform the system, and the bill does contain a number of reforms as well, even as we're doing that, to put us on a different path when it comes to how we fund organizations that I must say are doing excellent, excellent work. It's not about them, it's about the process that we use. And so, members, I look forward to a spirited discussion about the bill, and we'll get to that, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
I recognize a member from Candy Ojai, Representative Baker.
And thank you, Madam Speaker. Co-Chair Pinto, it's been an honor to work with you once again on this bill. As the co-chair of the labor workforce, I certainly see some wins in the bill. Certainly came down here with larger ambitions to try to make Minnesota a more friendly, more competitive state when it comes to making sure that we can compete. We didn't get certainly to the areas that I wanted to get to. And again, we'll share some information and some thoughts on that a little bit later on. But we did do some things in here that brought new, new teacher apprenticeship with this. So Rep. Mueller, thanks for all your work on this and others that made this all happen. We did lower the paid family medical leave cap a little bit with the leadership negotiations on that. We did reduce some of the spending in the Department of Deeds to help lower our targets. We had some tough targets to get to. And like Representative and Co-Chair Pinto did say, we had a commitment to take this and do a different way of allocating competitive grants to people that also want to help people get good jobs. People out of incarcerations, people out of substance use disorder, people that are dealing with childhood trauma or kids and helping get into childcare areas. That is, I know, a big focus of Co-Chair Pinto, and we worked really well on things like that. Again, there's some things missing in this bill, too. We can't have further discussion on that third, third reading. But again, we're making progress. We didn't get the wins that we needed to really get to because Minnesota jobs are getting harder and harder to maintain in Minnesota. And if we want to have good jobs with good benefits in Minnesota, we need to make sure we give good incentives and good environments to do good things with jobs in Minnesota. That's good for our schools, our counties, our hospitals. Everybody who has to hire people needs to make sure that the government knows the lanes it should stay in and the lanes that employers ought to be in. So with that, members, I do appreciate the work on this, again, with the committee members, the working group with our senators. Looking forward to more discussion. Thank you, Madam Chair.
There will be an amendment at the desk momentarily. There's an amendment at the desk. The clerk will report the amendment.
Schultz moves to amend, Senate File Number 17. The amendment is coded A1.
I recognize the member from Morrison, Representative Schultz, to explain the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. One of the main goals that I hope that this legislature would take on this session was mandate relief. For, for Republicans in, in the House, in the Senate, we've been looking to make it easier to do business in Minnesota, make it easier to employ people, make it easier to create a growing, thriving economy in Minnesota. One of the, the topics that I think really deserves attention is always seeking to address the issues that make it easier to do business for small businesses, for the people who are trying to provide for their families, provide products, goods, and services that Minnesotans use every day. And in that, members, we need to do better from a state level to ensure that our regulatory environment meets the moment for Minnesota's small businesses. Unfortunately, to this point, the product of our 2025 sessions has not delivered upon relief for those small businesses, which is the goal that I have here with the A1 amendment, which is the language that would mirror our House position with what the Senate passed before the end of the regular legislative session in the form of Senate File 2300. This bill and this amendment before you right now seeks to address the mandate on small businesses, specifically those who have four employees or less, for them to not, to actually be exempt from earned sick and safe time. And that would also include farmers and, and farms where they have five or fewer employees. In addition, members, one big and important thing is that earned sick and safe time has been a very heavy mandate on our public employers as well. So when we're thinking about our school districts, when we're thinking about our counties, when we're thinking about our cities, each of them are dealing with a mandate that stacks on top of what they have already bargained for. And what we're seeking to do with this amendment is ensure that what has already been bargained for, as it relates to this sort of sick and safe time, which the vast majority of public employers already do, that this just doesn't go beyond that. And in essence, members, what this provides is an opportunity for us to lower the cost for those public employers that, at the end of the day, push costs on down to taxpayers, on down to property taxpayers. And this special session hasn't yet wrapped up. And so there is that opportunity to take action, to support small businesses, to support property taxpayers, and to lower that mandate amidst the many that they've been dealing with in recent years, especially with the coming paid family medical leave mandate as well. And while I know we still have time to address this, I know that this issue is best dealt with in partnership and collaboration with one another. And while we don't have agreement on this right now, know that we want to continue to fight for our small businesses. So at this time, Madam Speaker, I'm going to withdraw the A1 amendment.
Representative Schultz withdraws the amendment. There are no further amendments at the desk. The clerk will give the bill its third reading.
Third reading, Senate File Number 17.
Third reading. Discussion to the bill. I recognize a member from Hennepin, Representative Greenman.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I didn't think we'd get here so quickly. Thank you, Representative Schultz, for speeding this up. Appreciate this, this bill and wanted to speak a bit to the labor portions of this bill. And what I love about this committee and what is so important about this committee is it sits at the center of all of the things we're doing here that impacts workers, small businesses, our communities, and our economy. And when we looked at the jobs portion of it, we invested in the things that we know are important for our workforce, but we have not yet had that critical conversation about what the workforce is going to look like in the next, as we deal with the Trump-Musk cuts and chaos. But as we look at the labor side, it really is a clear indication of the visions of, of both parties about how we came in to, and what we are, who we are fighting for. What I am most proud of is the work that we did to fight for the economic security and the, the economic autonomy for workers. So on January 5th, on January 1st, 2026, people will be able to have the time to care for a loved one, time to care when they have a, have a child or a sick parent. And we heard a lot of testimony about that. And when they tomorrow get sick on the job, they will have the benefit of knowing that earned, safe, and sick, which has been law for over a year, will be there to protect themselves and make sure that they can pay their rent at the end of the month. But what we saw all session was big corporations, was the biggest, the business partnership, was folks coming in and saying, telling us that employers, that, that businesses needed more power over their workers, more power over their, their economy. And what I think is fair is that what this bill does is it says no. It says workers are going to have power on the job. It says that the folks that, that, that we have been listening to, that we heard in committee will have what they need and will continue. So I actually just want to end because I think that, I think this is such a good bill, we should just get to voting for it. There's a lot of good stuff in this bill. There's good stuff in this bill that moves us forward on fighting misclassification, which is defrauding both our coffers, our public coffers, as well as workers. There is good stuff in this bill as it relates to teacher apprenticeships and making sure that we have the next generation of teachers. But it shouldn't have been this hard. We fought tooth and nail for everything, and there is a lot of stuff that is not in this bill that we left on the cutting room floor, as we should, that we shouldn't have had to work so hard to leave there. So, members, this is a good bill. You won't have to hear any more speeches from me about how we need to fight for workers because this is a bill that does and protects workers. It's a good labor bill. Members, vote green.
I recognize a member from Mauer, Representative Mueller.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I, I wanted to publicly thank Representative Frazier to work with, it was, it was, again, a pleasure to work with you as we had the same goal of expanding pathways for our educators. We have seen the groundbreaking legislation out of Tennessee in 2021 to have registered apprenticeship programs for teachers. And we have now seen since that, 2021, 40, over 40 other states have had some type of registered teacher apprentice programs so that we can expand pathways. And as I said, when the bill came off the House floor earlier, when I saw that this administration was interested in doing that, something that I've been working on for five years, I was really excited to be able to capitalize that. And when we started to put this bill together, Chair Pinto came to me and said, hey, let's have you and Frazier work together and make this happen. And you couldn't have picked a better person to work with because he was able to make sure that both sides of each of this was heard. We were able to really flush out what we wanted out of the program and make sure that geographic representation mattered and that we were going to have enough funding to be able to actually make a difference. So I really want to thank Representative Frazier, Co-Chair Pinto, Co-Chair Baker, to champion this for me, something that I really think is going to make a difference as we continue to look for people to come into the education field. Traditional ways are not working. We're seeing how, as much money as we put into it for grants and scholarships and all the things, traditional ways are not working. And we need to find ways to attract people to the education field. And people who are already there, who are already investing in our kids, substitute teachers, paras, these guys right here could become our future teachers, and apprenticeship is one way to do that. We already seen with Representative Clardy's bill with, with special education, it's, we're already seeing massive success with that. And so I'm excited to see how this is working as it's organically already happening. And thank you, Madam Chair, and I'm really, Madam Speaker, and I really hope that we'll be able to see this bill across the finish line.
I recognize a member from St. Louis, Representative Warwass.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, members. The labor bill, for whatever it does do, whatever it doesn't do, as you know, since I'm getting up to talk, is, I'm just really grateful that we're finally getting to the point where we can pass the unemployment insurance extension for the miners up in my district. This is a very important piece for my constituents, and I want to thank so many members that stood up to support this from the other side of the aisle, and, you know, my colleagues here as well that spoke very passionately about the need for this. It's really important. And so for all the guys and gals over at Hibtech and Menorca, this yes vote is for you. Thank you.
I recognize a member from Itasca, Representative Igo.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members, like my seatmate, Representative Warwass, just said, I just want to appreciate that this bill in front of us today does contain the UI extension for our miners up north. And to echo the thanks to everyone in this chamber, but also I want to thank the men and women of Minnesota's Iron Range because this bill wouldn't have been included today without the tireless advocacy of not only the men and women who have been laid off at Menorca and Hibtech, but also the men and women of our region who came together with labor with their representatives and senators of both sides of the aisle to advocate and lift up our issue on the range, and that's why it's in this bill today. And we're going to give peace of mind to our communities back home when we pass this today. So thank you, members, and I'll be voting green as well for this.
I recognize the member from St. Louis, Representative Zalesnikar.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. I just wanted to thank the committee members for all their hard work. And while we don't have everything either side of the aisle wanted, in this bill, there's many great things. And I echo the sentiment for the UI benefits. And I also am excited to see that there's $1 million that is going to help childcare in this, in this bill. Childcare is something that's affecting the entire state. I sit on the Children and Families Committee, and we talked about how we just don't have enough that we're doing to help families, to help providers. $1 million is going to go to help, this is going to help family childcare and center-based childcare. And families will be able to get up to $5,000 for an early learning scholarship or a CCAP grant that will help them, many of the childcare centers. We have, in some of our communities, only one childcare center, and they'll be able to be eligible for up to $5,000 for a grant. And I'm happy to see that a quarter of that money will come to northeastern Minnesota, where we have a tremendous amount of childcare issues, and it's going to benefit the entire state. In addition to that, we're just doing some things to help in small ways, whether it's nursing assistant programs to help our, our hospitals and the apprenticeship programs for teachers. And the little things make a big difference. So I just want to thank all the members on the committee and the members in this chamber. I urge you to vote yes.
I recognize a member from St. Louis, Representative Scraba.
On unemployment insurance, all for one and one for all. We're all standing, the Rangers here. We're supporting our brothers and sisters on the Iron Range. And I just want to, I have friends from Ely and the Babbitt area that got laid off, and they're all looking for work. And I'm hoping that some, somewhere in the future, we're going to help them. But if not, we still have this bill to make sure that they have a comfortable cushion if... if they don't have to. And I appreciate everybody's support on this bill. Thank you.
I recognize a member from Hennepin, Representative Frazier.
Madam Speaker, I just wanted to get up to say, Representative Mueller, I appreciated working with you as well. You had this thought and idea, and we had conversations about it since the day we got elected. So it's been, I'm glad that we got to, we're here for the finish line, looking forward for the green vote on this. And outside of that, I mean, this bill has done a great job of looking forward in terms of what we're looking at to ensure that our economy works for everybody here in Minnesota. So I'm voting green. Please vote green with us.
I recognize the member from Candy, Ohio, Representative Baker.
All right, Madam Speaker. So this is third reading on my bill, our bill, Chair Pinto. And again, there are good things in this bill. As I mentioned earlier, most of you know I'm a small business owner, have about 30, 40 employees. So I live this world every day, facing what it is to do. And again, we have some good things in here. We did shrink the size of the spending that we're doing in the department. We are changing the way, we are helping folks find dollars to train workers so that we can employ them in our small businesses. But I think maybe my comments on the third reading is just to say, we certainly didn't do enough this year to help businesses maintain and sustain the ability to keep employees going like we think we need to because there are many of them that are leaving the state of Minnesota because of the way our policies are affecting them. That is the fact. That is something that's happening. I wish we would have had some information that we could have found clarity on the non-compete that I know is super important, Representative Greenman. That was an item that I know that she fought hard for, but to have a complete ban of a non-compete in the state of Minnesota is not good for Minnesota and the technology world that we have enjoyed over the decades and just the technology and research. You think of these large companies that have done amazing things for not only our state, our region, our country, and the globe, but non-competes are an important part when done right. We couldn't find the right. And I think that Representative Niska worked really hard on that with others. We have to come back to this because this is not going to be good. You might have seen the May 14th, 2025, just a few weeks ago, Medtronic laid off 20 people at their research lab here in Minneapolis, and that's a big deal, folks. That is a very important company to us, very profitable company. But what we are going to start to see are companies making decisions about certain components of what their business model is, and they might go somewhere else to do it. And they might not just stand up like I am and fight and yell for it because that's what not, Minnesota companies don't do it that way. They just slowly kind of slip away. I've been talking to companies with this kind of thing, with non-compete, because I didn't know even a ton about it before I got into this one here because this was more of a labor discussion last couple of years, and I've been more on the workforce job side of things. So this has been a learning curve for me, too. But this non-compete is important for us to look at some of the best-paying jobs in the state of Minnesota and the best companies that have done very good things. And again, if we don't fix this, these other companies are going to slip away. A company is located here in Minnesota, a Bloomington company, 1,200 employees in the state of Minnesota. Right now, they're down to about 1,050. And you know what? 100 of those jobs have went elsewhere quietly because they can do it cheaper, and that's what they can do because they have to stay competitive in the world that they are in. So this is something we just can't ignore. We did not get a chance this year to talk in depth about Earn, Sick, and Safe Time. Representative Schultz tried to maybe bring up an amendment today. We know that there's some global agreements. We didn't want to, you know, take this out too long. But, members, Earn, Sick, and Safe Time is something that a lot of companies have built into their very robust programs already. And because we couldn't change some of the language that was offered in a bipartisan bill in the Senate, it didn't even get over here to be discussed. It couldn't get into our conference bill because members of the Senate were just not going to have it. And we never got a chance to really talk about why that was important for very generous companies already offering very good programs, and their benefits could meld in. And we needed this language, though, to allow that to happen for those companies that were already leading the way in this important area. So we are going to come back someday to talk about why Earn, Sick, and Safe Time needs to be right-sized. And also, it needs to be thought of about how it's going to work for public employees as well and public unions and collective bargaining agreements. You just can't go around collective bargaining agreements, folks, in public unions where they're paid for by the public property taxes, like our school districts. If you just want to start writing the benefit programs for collective bargaining agreements, this is not the body to do it in. But in 2023, when you decided to pass the Paid Family Medical Leave Bill, you should have thought about how is this going to affect our school districts and anybody that has collective bargaining agreements? So a year from now, we are going to be sitting here talking about what are we going to do now for the school districts? That is going to be coming like a steamroller to us. We heard about it loud and clear this year. Nobody wanted to get serious to talk about those benefits to those public employees and the collective bargaining agreements that they have worked on for decades to get it where they wanted it? So that is coming, members, next year. Stay tuned. That's a big deal because it's going to really affect our schools especially, which then is going to affect cuts in our schools, which then is going to affect our kids and how they learn. Because the only thing schools can do when they don't get more money from us or their local property taxes is the only thing left is to cut labor. And that is going to hurt our kids. So just, we didn't get far enough, nearly far enough, to look at even looking at an exemption if that's what they wanted to do. That's a miss on our Part II. I noticed again recently, again, I want to talk about these labor issues because this is one of the most important things that I wanted to do this year, and we just didn't get far enough. But again, in St. Paul, and again, daycare centers, unprecedented, daycare centers are closing in the great city of St. Paul, which is sending families scrambling. It was in the Star Tribune. I know my good friend, Co-Chair Dave Pinto, was quoted as well. And again, this is an alarming thing. These are great centers that have been around for just decades, 60, 70 years. But they're noting, again, this is from Sandcastle Early Learning Center leadership described the closing as just insurmountable financial and operational challenges. And they actually listed, they noted new policies like including Earn, Sick, and Safe Time and the upcoming Paid Family Medical Leave Program that are compounding the challenges of keeping childcare centers affordable. Again, that also goes along to say a couple of years ago, when we had included, you know, free daycare for our public schools with our pre-K and four-year-olds. That was the gravy that the childcare centers really needed to make this work. Well, now, a lot of them are just staying in the schools, and they don't have that at those childcare centers. So those are really important facts that we are going to be addressing. And the one thing we shouldn't keep doing is just pumping money into the system of childcare support when on the backside, we're killing them to try to keep them employees where they can afford to do the benefits that they feel are right for those employees. Guys, we can't have it both ways. You've got to make sure you give that operator a chance to be a great operator and just don't pile more money on top of it because if there's a year like we have this year and we have to do cuts, you'll see just overwhelming closures because the money isn't readily available every single biennium. And we're seeing that clearly this year. And finally, I'll wrap it up. Madam Chair and members, again, Paid Family Medical, I know, was the pinnacle of what you really wanted to protect. Again, it's a good benefit. It's a benefit that a few other states are offering. I'm not discounting that having time at home with new families is not a bad idea. It's not. But the way you built it was so robust, so expensive, it already went up 20% before it left the gate. Members, do you know Department of Economic Development hasn't even finished making the rules yet, and this is going to start in six months? Do you know that businesses, when they start planning their benefit sets, they need six months or a year to start planning what's the next benefit set? And they don't even know what the rules are yet. Businesses are worried. They're scared. They're angry. They've got a lot of anxiety because they want to do good things for their employees. They want to get it right, and now they're desperately afraid to not make a mistake because they don't want to get in trouble with the Department or the Department of Labor. But the rules aren't even baked yet, and they're trying to figure out what does this look like in a few months. So we have a lot of work to do to try to make Minnesota competitive again because Minnesota is losing our edge. We have a fabulous workforce center here. We have fabulous working ethics here in this great state. But if you have to defend a very partisan policy that happened two years ago, you know there's going to be changes coming because it didn't get bipartisan support to stay and stick, and we didn't do that this year. So to the businesses out there that I said I was going to work our tails off, and I know many members here tried to do that. I tried to get members on the DFL side to work with us on even just some of the smallest changes, and they really had no interest of really doing that this year with Paid Family Medical Leave. We're going to keep working this angle. We're going to keep at it because we do not want you to leave the state. We do not want you to shut down. We do want you to grow, prosper, make a profit because that's what makes Minnesota great. But we need to do more on this, and we need to make sure it's a right-sized program to keep our families happy, to keep our taxes lower, because this payroll tax is coming, and it's not going to be easy to pay. But we have a long way to go. So, members, thank you for allowing us to try to get through this very divided and also equally shared government system in this session. This was a very big deal. We got through it. I don't think anybody loves everything that's in every bill. I certainly don't. I don't think my colleagues on the other side like it either. But we did stop a lot of things that were important, too, that would have hurt businesses. But it's important to recognize businesses are not the enemy. Don't think because you own a business that you're ultra wealthy, ultra rich, and that's what I hear a lot of on this House floor. My gosh, if you could see what a lot of us do, sometimes we're just buying a job. But we've got to make sure we stay in a competitive environment so we can stay in business here in Minnesota. We cannot let Minnesota lose our competitive edge. Remember this, members, when you go home over the interim and talk to your school board members, talk to your folks that are in this area, talk to the counties, the administrators about what this will do to them, too. How is this going to bake in with Paid Family when it comes to the collective bargaining agreements? You need to know that because when we come back next February, we're going to have to talk about this. So I do hope we can support the bill today. I'm going to vote in favor of this bill, but we have a lot more work to do. And we have to get serious about getting these kind of benefits written by the government and not employers to get it to be right-sized if you're going to include everybody. Because this is a dangerous way to go about the road of being a competitive state here. So, members, let's do a green vote. But again, there's a reason why you don't need to support this either, and we'll come back to this next year. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
I recognize a member from Ramsey, Representative Pinto.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Chair Baker, thanks for the collaboration. Members, thank you. Chair Baker, I was in sort of a kind of gauzy, genial, happy mood, and you brought up childcare and early learning, always gets me fired up, which is great. I'm going to get back, I'm going to get to that in a second. But I do want to note, members, the many bipartisan reasons to be supporting this bill, just many of the pieces that are in this bill, some of them have been mentioned. Representative Baikberg has the proposal regarding the STEM ecosystem, make sure to bring young people into careers in the STEM field, so critical for us. The construction industry is being supported. Representative Berg had a proposal, and Representative Nelson, several others. Mental health, I know, an issue regarding, Representative Nelson was advancing. Of course, we've heard about the UI for minors. So grateful to Representative Pete Johnson for his leadership and the members in the GOP as well, standing up on that. I know it's so important. Vocational rehabilitative services, a program for folks with disabilities, making sure that they have access to employment, a high priority for Chair Baker. Thank you, Representative Ray Rower, Representative Hicks, for your leadership in that area. The misclassification enforcement that Representative Greenman has led so much on, which, may I say, is very important for employers as well, employers doing the right thing, of which so many of us are representing those employers, making sure that they are defended when they're doing the right thing, paying their employees the right way. And then that leads me to early care and learning. Proposals from Representative Zalesnikar mention that, Representative Liz Lee, Representative Chair Katise Witun. Representative Baker, I feel like, Chair Baker, I feel like childcare and early learning is such a great example in our society and our economy of a sense that folks have that the system is rigged and does not work for them, that the economy does not work for them. I read that article about the program in my district in St. Paul and had conversations with them. And what they've talked about is the challenges of making the economics work when you have parents paying in in the most challenging time of their lives, workers receiving incredibly low pay, and people ask, where does the money go? And the answer is because the economics do not work. They wouldn't work at K-12 education if we didn't have public support in some form. They don't work in zero to four as well. And one thing I am so grateful for about this bill, and thank you, Representative Lee, and Chair Katise Witun, Representative Zalesnikar, is the recognition that this is a workforce development issue. It's an economic development issue. I mean, members, that is incredibly important, and I'm glad that we're setting, we're kind of putting a stake in the ground in this bill to say that this is an issue that is important in this area, as it is also in the area of education and children and families as well. Members, that leads me then, Chair Baker brought that up in connection with paid leave and with Earn, Sick, and Safe Time. And it's actually helpful to think about this situation. We're talking about early childhood educators as an example of a kind of employee that are paid, I think it's the lowest wage you can have with a high school diploma. And the question is, if they have a baby, or their family member gets cancer, or they get sick, do they have the opportunity to take care of that family need? That's a question we're answering for those who work in the early childhood education field, which, by the way, could not be more important work than brain building for babies and for our society. But it's not just them. It's all those low-wage workers and all those workers in our society who are entitled, who say, look, if I have a baby, my family has cancer, I have cancer, I get sick, I should have the opportunity to take care of those needs. And we know that in the other societies around the world that have Paid Family Medical Leave, that is better off for the entire society. This is supported by labor. It is coming on January 1 for paid leave, and thank God it is coming. Minnesotans have been waiting years and decades for that to start. Members, when this bill was voted off the House floor with a majority of House members, there was nothing in this bill on Paid Family Medical Leave. There now is, negotiated by the leaders, there's a reduction in the cap and the premiums. When this bill was voted off the House floor, there was nothing about Earn, Sick, and Safe Time. There are, in fact, changes to Earn, Sick, and Safe Time in this bill demanded by Republicans and part of negotiations. They're included in this bill. They don't include everything in Representative Schultz's amendment. Interestingly enough, one of the provisions in that amendment that got withdrawn is actually currently in the bill that we're about to vote for. So there, if, however you voted as the bill came off the House floor, this bill has changes to PFML and E S S T that were not in the bills that came off the floor. Are they as many as my Republican colleagues would want? No, they're not. But boy, are they, does it leave the programs in place to meet the needs of Minnesotans as they are crying out and screaming out for us to meet? Yes, yes, they are. These are programs that, in fact, make Minnesotans stronger and our state stronger. Members, I think that we have a sense, just sort of looking nationally, people have a sense that the economy is rigged against the kind of small businesses that we represent. I've seen you, Chair Baker, how hard you work for your small business, you personally, how hard you work, a sense that the economy is rigged against those small businesses and against individuals. I, for my part, and I know for my colleagues as well in our caucus, we believe in empowering people, in individual people, people to have the chance to be with their families if they have that baby or the family member gets sick, a chance to say, hey, if they want to walk away from their job and go to another job, they have the chance to do that. That's why we stood up against exemptions on the ban on non-competes, to say, look, employer, you negotiate with the employee, but if the employee wants to leave, let them make the money to take care of their family and to have the food and pay for their rent, et cetera. We believe in empowering people and giving them options. And, members, those of you on all the other committees, I think I said this when the bill passed off the House floor before, you are doing workforce and economic development work. Those of you in the transportation area, as you're making sure that there are opportunities, and those of us looking out for transit funding in the transportation area, that is empowering people to have that option. Certainly, my colleagues and, boy, I miss you in the children and family space, you are making sure that little kids are growing up and that kids are protected along the way. In the K-12 space, in the higher ed bill, and in all the other areas, you do that work. We simply are in charge of this particular piece. we simply are in charge of this particular piece of it when it comes to deed and DLI. Members, there are so many reasons to vote for this bill. I know it doesn't go as far as some of you may want. It goes farther than it did off the House floor, and there's so much good stuff in this bill. Members, let's come together and let's vote green on this bill and move our economy and our workers forward. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The clerk will take the roll. The clerk will call the name of the member participating remotely.
Olson.
Senate File 17, Olson votes no.
Olson votes no.
The clerk will close the roll. There being 96 ayes and 37 nays, the bill is passed and its title is agreed to. Messages from the Senate.
Message from the Senate, Madam Speaker. I hereby announce the passage by the Senate of the following Senate file, herewith transmitted. Senate File Number Two, the message assigned Thomas S. Bodden, Secretary of the Senate.
First reading of Senate files.
First reading, Senate File Number Two, an act relating to energy, appropriating money and transferring money for energy and renewable development accounts. Pursuant to Article Four, Section 19 of the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, Niska moves that the rule therein be suspended and an urgency be declared and that the rules of the House be so far suspended so that Senate File Number Two be given its second and third readings and be placed upon its final passage.
I recognize Representative Niska to explain the motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and member. Senate File Two is the energy bill. It's part of the work that we need to get done today, and I urge members to support the motion.
I recognize the member from Ramsey, Representative Hollins.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I also recommend that people support the motion.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. The clerk will give the bill a second reading.
Second reading, Senate File Number Two.
Second reading. The clerk will report the bill.
Senate File Number Two, an act relating to energy, appropriating and transferring money for energy and renewable development accounts.
I recognize a member from Hennepin, Representative Akum, to explain the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, members. We're marching right down this line of bills tonight. So happy to talk to you a little bit about the energy bill. It's looking a little different now coming back from Conference Committee. And in some ways, that's good, and in other ways, not so good. I think that when we left the House floor, we had been given a zero target. And so in our combined targets, we had a $4 million cut per biennium. And so unfortunately, we had to make that cut in the weatherization program, which I think is an unfortunate choice. But we didn't have a lot of choice because of the way the Department of Commerce budget is set up. So that's the bad news. And so that was disappointing. But, members, what I will say is some good news is that we were, we did include some nonpartisan, or excuse me, some bipartisan and non-controversial policy provisions to the bill.
Members, please take your conversations to the alcoves or the retiring room. Representative Akum.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Of those policy provisions, there were a couple of extensions for some RDA projects, one for the St. Thomas microgrid, the other for rooftop solar array, the National Sports Center. So great that they will be able to continue to access the funds that we had previously appropriated to them. There was a couple of technical fixes that we were able to include in the bill. One is a definition of low income for home energy, the Home Energy Assistance Program. Another is adding the tribal nations as eligible recipients for our geothermal planning grants, another good thing. And then we had two bipartisan bills. One was securitization, and honestly, this is a bill that has been traditionally carried by Democrats. This year was carried by a Republican. And it's a good bill to ensure that when unforeseen things happen with our utilities, several years ago, we had a large cold snap that went all the way down into Texas, you may recall, Winter Storm Yuri it was called, and it drove up the prices of natural gas. And it made it incredibly expensive for utility payers. And so this bill will help to allow the utilities to spread those costs over a number of years to make those bills not so, not quite so high. So it's a good bill that will help make our, keep our utilities affordable. And then we also changed the definition of large energy facility in terms of storage tanks for natural gas. Representative Sexton carried that bill. And so those are, those are the things that we added to it. I think overall, it's still a pretty skinny bill. I think that we, in our divided government, the fact that we were able to get as much done as we did is good, and along the way, we also worked hard to protect many of the gains that we had already had. So with that, Madam Speaker, I will turn it over to others who may have comments.
I recognize a member from Lyon, Representative Swazinski.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, members. Appreciate the opportunity to speak before you today. You know, the energy bill that sits before you has changed quite a little bit from when it left the House as it came out of committee. Worked very hard to make some real inroads. The Senate bill versus the House bill, as they left committee, were drastically different bills. The bills coming out of the Senate had a spectrum of great issues, CSG reform, net metering, and working with the RDA. And, you know, working with Senator friends and standing hand in hand, the Republican Caucus in the Senate, the DFL Caucus in the Senate, and the Republican Caucus here in the House, were standing strong and looking at some very baseline reforms that, quite frankly, need to happen. In the energy space, it's no surprise to anyone, if you've talked to any business owners across the state or anybody within the energy space, Minnesota's passed a 2040 bill. It's a carbon-free mandate on energy producers to be carbon-free by 2040. And the legislature continues to say that we have an opinion on how we get there, rather than let the market dictate how that's going to happen. And I think the legislature swung and missed an opportunity here this session to really pull back, get out of the way, take our thumb off the scales of energy production here in our state to allow the market to dictate how to get there. Whether that's industrial solar, whether that's wind, whether that's large hydro, whatever that might be, or even potentially lifting the moratorium on nuclear energy here in Minnesota. And, you know, those are the things that we really need to be looking at. So as we set vision, members, here in the Minnesota House, we have 134 members. And I would challenge each and every single one of you to push past giving ourselves relevancy here on this floor and give the market and give the industries the right and the ability to go after it the way they best seem fit. Not choosing winners and losers, not making sure that our friends are profitable, but get out of the way and allow energy to produce where it can be produced the cheapest, most efficiently, and the safest manner possible. So while I wish this bill was potentially even thinner than it is as it comes before us, I wish it had a lot more in different areas when it comes to policy. So appreciate it, I appreciate staff, I appreciate nonpartisan staff for our hard work dedication, I appreciate the DFLer staff, I appreciate Indy and AJ standing in the alcove, and the hard work and dedication of all the caucus members, the committee members that sat on the committee and heard the bills that really matter to Minnesotans across the state. We've got some real interesting days ahead of us, whether it be the issues of data centers and how we have an opportunity to actually attract data centers to the state, rather than do everything we can do to discourage them by creating an atmosphere of dysfunction and calm. Or we can move forward and get the job done for Minnesotans when it comes to the cheap, reliable, safe, efficient energy in Minnesota. Thank you.
There are no amendments at the desk. The clerk will give the bill a third reading.
Third reading, Senate File Number Two.
Third reading. Discussion to the bill. I recognize the member from Sherburne, Representative Meckland.
Got me a little quicker than I expected there, Madam Speaker. So as Chair Swazinski just said, there is, you know, this could have been a lot better, the Senate had a lot of much better provisions in it. However, for my fourth energy budget, this is the best energy bill I've ever seen. Thank goodness we had a split house. As Chair Akum mentioned, one of the most disappointed parts was they didn't fund the weatherization. Luckily, in her data center bill, she'll get more than that out of one data center annually. Another interesting thing, our local paper came out this last Friday, and there's a new spurring market with solar. Representative Schultz's constituent has a thriving business of renting out 2,500 sheep every year to go graze the grass under the solar panels. My understanding is they will make more money doing this with sheep than you could possibly make, whether you're shearing the wool or raising it for meat. So I'm sure that the, well, I won't mention their name, this particular farmer is pretty pleased. I've heard it's quite thriving up there. I'm a little undecided where I'm at with this, and I'll speak later, certainly on the data center bill, but I do generally mean of all the ones I've seen for the fourth one, this is by far the least painful. Thank you.
I recognize a member from Olmsted, Representative Quam.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And, you know, at some point, we need to get a little bit more intelligent, long-range in our thinking. Tillable land isn't where you put solar panels. This year, during the early summer, well, just weeks ago, hail went through, broke up panels, but because it was on that tillable land and where the water drainage was, you ended up having some of those rare earths that are bad getting into the soil. If you want to do it, Rochester Airport, they want to put it above the parking area. So if you've got something like that, you gain the fact that cars are parked underneath, they're protected from the rain, snow, hail. But if you did have something like that happen, you've got a surface that you clean up any of those contaminants. And the other thing that we don't seem to be doing is realizing electric vehicles aren't the greatest for our part of the world. In the winter, the mileage and range is worse. My son bought one, and he had it for a few years, and it didn't work out. But what would work out is multiple major companies have new generation hydrogen fuel cell and hydrogen engines, and they had a truck go over 1,700 miles on a fill. Two, 300 miles versus 1,700. In the wintertime, you don't give up half your mileage range. In an ag area that has winter, we should be pursuing hydrogen. We've got windmills idle because the grids are full. You have an electrolysis system to get hydrogen out, so you can use that when the wind's blowing, but the grid's full. That way, you'd have hydrogen generation across the state, and we could facilitate an intelligent next generation of vehicles. But we're tying to the 100% electric, let's go solar, let's, you know, we need to think ahead of the past. This bill doesn't. I can't support continuing stuff that isn't going to be where we need to be. I'm voting no.
I recognize a member from Hennepin, Representative Kraft.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. One thing that Representative, the Chair Swazinski said that I agree with, there are interesting days and years ahead of us. And Representative Quam, I really appreciate your ideas, different ways of thinking about things. I wish we could have more of that. I am proud of this bill. It's a simple bill. I'm proud that we're funding government, proud that we've defended attempts to roll back our clean energy by 2040 law, and also to destroy our thriving renewable energy market. But it is a lost opportunity to make more progress on climate change. One example, it's a lost opportunity that we didn't invest in the renewable development account projects, bipartisan renewable development account projects on green hydrogen, green ammonia, geothermal, as well as Energy Alley, which seeks to, is doing great work and seeks to create an innovation ecosystem and jobs, clean energy jobs engine in Minnesota. Lost opportunity. Three things happened since this bill left the House floor that I want to speak about that I think reinforce the need for more action. First, the reconciliation bill passed the U.S. House. There's many things about it, but one is it would basically be a full repeal of the Inflation Reduction Act, which was the first federal action that was actually on the scale necessary to give us a shot at addressing climate change. If this happens, it will increase U.S. greenhouse gas emissions by half a billion metric tons by 2030, and a billion tons by 2035, which is the equivalent of operating 220 coal-fired power plants for a year. Not to mention the additional air pollution we'll have. And because renewables are the cheapest source of energy, this misguided reconciliation bill will raise electricity rates, 9% by 2030, 17% by 2035, total of $50 billion in added costs for households and businesses per year. You talk about rate relief, Chair Swazinski, we need to go against, we need to advocate against this bill. It will reduce cumulative clean energy investments by $1 trillion over the next decade. And this, these markets in clean energy are some of the fastest-growth, most exciting markets of the century, and we're going to cede them to China. Another reason why we need to do more here. Second thing, last week, wildfires. You know, this is climate change. You put more heat-trapping gases in the atmosphere, and guess what they do? They trap more heat. This trapped heat makes climate change, makes hot and dry conditions worse, makes wildfires worse. Do you know that forest fires are burning more than twice as much tree cover today as two decades ago? And it's worse in Minnesota, in places like Minnesota, that are warming faster than the rest of the planet. 70% of all fire-related tree cover costs in the world occurred in northern boreal regions like northern Minnesota. And Representative Scraba, last week, Grand Portage in your district hit an air quality index of 800. 800, this is the worst air quality ever reported in Minnesota, not even close. It's so high that the index that folks have to track this, just at the red level, which is 151 to 200, says some members of the general public may experience health effects. The purple level, 201 to 300, health alert, the risk of health effects is increased for everyone. The maroon level, hazardous, is 301 to 500. for everyone. The maroon level, hazardous, is 301 to 500, health warning of emergency conditions, everyone is more likely to be affected. 800, everyone at these levels should be not outdoors. And the third thing that happened since this bill left the floor is that my son graduated from high school. What's so hard about this is we're going to be looking back in 10 years when he's 28, or in 20 years when he's 38, looking back to 2025 as a time of cooler weather and fewer air quality index warnings. That's what's in store. You know, climate change, addressing it requires some of the long-term thinking that Representative Quam mentioned, and requires systemic change. And systemic change, a key part of that is government. And so each and every one of us is part of that. Each and every one of us has an opportunity to make a difference, to do things that will have an impact here in Minnesota and that can be replicated elsewhere. So as I said, I'm happy to support this bill. We protect key things, but my challenge to all is we need to do better. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
I recognize a member from Itasca, Representative Igo.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you members for the discussion on this bill. I just wanted to say a couple of quick things. One of the things that's in this bill today that I couldn't remember if it was mentioned, I wanted to make sure it's mentioned. It's really small, but I think it's going to make a huge difference, and it changes to the State Competitiveness Fund that strikes out some words so that we can use that fund to go for other federal dollars, which is actually a really great thing. Because I know this chamber's talked a lot about some of the things we're seeing in DC as scary, but the Trump administration's doing a fantastic job on energy by doing executive orders on nuclear energy and many of the other things that we're seeing investments in coming out of DOE. So this small change in our policy bill today is actually going to set the state of Minnesota up to hopefully partner and receive millions of dollars in funding for energy projects here in the state of Minnesota. And that's something we talked a lot about in the Energy Committee, whether it be solar and wind, which we're doing already, are in our great in their own way. We talked about a lot of other great things. Nuclear energy has turned into a really vibrant and strong conversation here at the state capitol, and I look forward to what's going to happen when we adjourn, going into interim and having conversations, continuing to work with the Prairie Island Indian community, as well as the stakeholders of Minnesota, to bring nuclear energy back to Minnesota and partner with the federal government using something like the State Competitiveness Fund. It's going to be a really exciting time for energy diversification, so we can make sure to have that reliable and affordable energy that we need here in the state of Minnesota. One of those other things that I wish could be in the bill today, but I think the conversation's alive and well, is biomass. And Representative Kraft, you talked about the wildfires. Biomass is a solution to help us keep our forests more clear and clean, so we don't have to worry about those fires as much. And it's a solution, and you and I've had some great conversations on this, and I look forward to continuing to have these conversations because I think there's a lot of solutions on energy that are on the table in front of us. They didn't make it into the bill today, but I really appreciate the relationships we're billing and the conversations that we're having, and some of the bills that are sitting on the general register right now that we can pass in the future. So, and I also just want to thank my co-author on the securitization bill, Representative Hollins. Thanks for helping me present the bill and get the bill done. Happy that it's in the bill today. But with that, thank you, Madam Speaker.
I recognize a member from Anoka, Representative West.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, I don't particularly mind this energy bill. I think it keeps the lights on. But it would be nice, because I thought we were at the point, I thought we were there, where we had a bipartisan consensus on nuclear energy. Maybe we'll be there soon, but we're so close. Yes, nuclear energy is expensive, but if we want to move to clean baseload power, if we want a 100% mandate that doesn't result in mass death, we're going to need significant nuclear power. But just to make sure that we're working from, I don't know, an objective standpoint on reducing greenhouse gas emissions, because that is a goal that many of us share. The number one cause of reducing greenhouse gas emissions is moving not from coal to solar, from coal to natural gas. And treating all these fossil fuels the same, like, just assuming they're evil by existing, natural gas is incredibly valuable, not just as an energy source. In Minnesota, well, in the United States, natural gas is a waste product instead of our, some of our energy extraction. We have a tenth of the cost of Europe when it comes to natural gas. That leads to all sorts of industrial products that we can do at an incredibly effective price and lower energy costs and lower emissions. It's a win-win-win-win-win. So I understand the consternation when it comes to, like, coal and whatnot. Unfortunately, coal's very plentiful, but we can't be demonizing all of these fuels because the number one leader of reduced greenhouse gas emissions in the United States is a shift from coal to natural gas. The other thing I think we should have bipartisan consensus on that has been building is efficiency. Efficiency is one of the best things. But efficiency through mandates telling people that they have to have electric lawnmowers, which I do have an electric lawnmower and an electric car. I'm basically a communist. But we have things that I think we have bipartisan agreement on that just get caught up in the fact that we think Minnesota policy can prevent wildfires in other countries. We are a tiny slice, but what we can do is reduce our greenhouse gas emissions responsibly and make the lives better for our people. So the transition to electric vehicles can happen through market incentives. Moving from coal to natural gas? Well, maybe we need some government intervention there. But the idea that we're going to move from coal to this fantasy where we're all going to have solar on our roofs when we live in a high humidity tundra doesn't make any sense. So my hope is, this bill came out as kind of a, you know, we can't agree, so we're not going to do too much, which is how government should function, by the way. Government is not supposed to do things that don't have consensus. But we should be moving to a lower emission standpoint in a way that is efficient and doesn't tell people how to live their lives, for one. So thank you, Chair Swedzinski, for working on this bill. Thank you, Chair Acom, for working on this bill. I think there's a lot more common ground that gets caught up in ideological battles. So my hope is, especially going into the future, that we can focus on things we agree on that achieve mutual goals, because it's there, but we get, we just get tripped up. So thanks for everybody's work on this bill. I know, having been involved in a negotiation on one of these bills, I go, I have a great sympathy for all people who have to deal with this. So, members, it's hard to say whether you should vote green or red on a bill that is more of a consensus bill, like, consensus for lack of consensus bill. But I'm going to vote green because when we don't have full agreement, government isn't supposed to make drastic changes. That's how the system's designed, and I can live with that. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
I recognize a member from Lyon, Representative Swedzinski.
Vote red or green. You can choose.
I recognize the author, Representative Acom.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Well, I appreciate the comments and the conversation, and I really want to thank Representative Igo for bringing up the changes to the State Competitiveness Fund. That's a really big change, and I think I agree with you wholeheartedly that that will have a big impact on our state. So thank you for bringing that up. And I appreciate you also pinch hitting on the working group. So appreciate that. And thank you to all the committee members. I, on both sides of the aisle, appreciate the conversations we had in committee this year and the work that we have yet to do. So appreciate that. And especially a big thank you to Vice Chair Larry Kraft. Your perspective and your experience and your thoughts are always a good part of our conversation. So thank you. Want to special thank you to the nonpartisan staff. I see Bobby Lefenbach. I don't see Ashley Eng here, but is Ashley, there's Ashley, okay. Thank you to nonpartisan staff and to partisan staff on both sides of the aisle. Really appreciate our committee would not function without you. So appreciate all of your help. And with that, I will just close in saying that I had two priorities for committee this year. The first was to pass a budget, and the second was to protect the gains that we've made over the last biennium in our transition to a clean energy economy. And this bill does both of those things. It protects so many of the gains that we've made, and we're passing a budget. So I encourage everyone to vote green. Thank you.
There being no further discussion, the clerk will take the roll. The clerk will call the name of the member participating remotely.
Olson.
Senate File Two, Olson votes yes.
Olson votes aye.
The clerk will close the roll. There being 90 ayes and 41 nays, the bill is passed and its title is agreed to. There's a motion at the desk. The clerk will report the motion.
Pursuant to Article Four, Section 19 of the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, Niska moves that the rule therein be suspended and an urgency be declared, and that the rules of the House be so far suspended so that House Law Number 16 be given its second and third readings and be placed upon its final passage.
I recognize a member from Anoka, Representative Niska, to explain the motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. House File 16 is the data center bill that was part of the negotiated agreement to have the special session today. I urge members to support the motion.
I recognize the member from Hennepin, Representative Long.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I also urge support for the motion.
There being no further discussion, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. The clerk will give the bill a second reading.
Second reading, House Law Number 16.
Second reading. The clerk will report the bill.
House Law Number 16, an act relating to data centers.
I recognize the member from Fillmore, the author, Representative Davids, to explain the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. This data center bill is a result of something that happened many years ago. I believe the year is about 2001 in the tax bill when data centers were first established, and they've been one of the most successful programs that has ever been in this state. This data center bill establishes very large customer class or subclass with the PUC. It requires data centers that use over 100 million gallons of water per year to supply pre-application information to the DNR. It creates a fee on qualified large-scale data centers that goes into the energy and conservation account. This bill also extends the sunset on the IT sales tax exemption to 35 years. It's very important to note that with the eligibility of 35 years, all these provisions have been agreed to by the data center coalition as reflected in the Energy Environmental Addendum. This maintains a sunset at 2042, and there's a change where it said whichever is earlier to whichever is later. This proposal is the building trades, their number one issue this year. This is very, very important. This is a very, very important jobs bill. Thousands of jobs will be as a result of this bill passing. And we are in kind of a time situation here because states around us are landing these data centers, and it's my goal to get this passed, signed into law, so that we can start getting some of these data centers in Minnesota. North Dakota just had a massive data center land there. Cedar Rapids, Iowa, you have them in Wisconsin. These should be coming to Minnesota. And with this legislation, I believe we'll see more coming to Minnesota. Data centers provide a variety of high-paying job opportunities, engineers, technicians, electrician, construction workers. And again, we have a lot of competition, also Illinois, from surrounding states. So, members, I'd really appreciate your support here. Again, this is endorsed by the trades in the Chamber of Commerce. This will be the largest job bill you'll vote on this year. Thank you, members.
There are no amendments at the desk. The clerk will give the bill a third reading.
Third reading, House Law Number 16.
Third reading. Discussion to the bill. I recognize a member from Hennepin, Representative Acom.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I will say that I think 2025 was the year of the data center. Certainly was a large bit of conversation in the Energy Committee and an issue that I've worked on quite a bit this year. And the focus of my interest was really on the very large data centers, the hyperscale data centers. And my intention was to kind of work on the policy side of things. And it was really with the intent that if we're going to have tax cuts for these data centers, then we darn well need some guardrails on the data centers. And so because very large data centers can have a big impact on our environment, they can, as Chair David said, use more than 100 million gallons of water a year. Some of them will use more energy than the city of Minneapolis, and many of them can have hundreds of diesel backup generators. And so with facilities of this size, Minnesota really deserves to have protections and strong environmental protections, strong ratepayer protections, and protecting our priorities of reaching 100% clean energy. And so, members, while this bill doesn't fully achieve these protections...
Members, if you could please take your conversations to the alcoves or to the retiring room. Representative Acom.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. While this bill doesn't fully achieve these protections, what it does do is make some important forward movement and some progress, and especially on the ratepayer protections, to make sure that you and I aren't footing the bill for the extra generation and transmission that data centers are going to require. This bill ensures that the data centers will cover those costs. This bill will help protect our clean energy priorities. And one of the benefits that Representative Meckland pointed out a little bit ago is that this bill establishes a community benefit program, and it's designed to help low-income Minnesotans with weatherization and energy efficiency. And it's a great offset at a time when the energy, or excuse me, the data centers will be adding a big load of energy demand on our system. And so that's, in my opinion, a great win, and not to mention it helps offset the cut we had to do to our Energy Committee budget. And it does include some environmental provisions on water to ensure that there's early coordination with the Department of Natural Resources. And that's important because as data centers have been locating in our state, they aren't always in conversation with the Department of Natural Resources. And so the information and knowledge about water availability isn't always available. They don't have that information when they're choosing a site. And so having that early coordination will be really important. And so I am going to support this bill because of these accomplishments, but I will continue to work on these issues because I do think it's really important that we have thorough environmental review on these big facilities that have big impacts on our communities. And I also want to make sure that the host communities have some, have a voice in where they're sited. I've heard some concerns in terms of the siting locations, and I think that we have to have further conversations to ensure that we're protecting our communities. I know that data centers are coming. I think data centers bring a benefit, and many of those benefits Chair Davids has already I think data centers bring a benefit, and many of those benefits Chair Davids has already described with jobs and local economic development and others. And so I support this bill. There's more work to do, and the good news about that is that we have another session coming. So you can expect to continue to talk data centers in 2026, too. With that, Madam Chair, I thank you.
I recognize the member from Olmsted, Representative Quam.
Two things. One, how can we soften that deficit that we see coming? Increase investment in businesses in Minnesota? So data centers would help with that. But number two, if you care about the environment and climate, data centers in Minnesota use less energy than they would in most of the rest of the United States because Minnesota is cooler. There'd be less electricity, and that's part of the reason why so many would like to put it here. And so I'm for allowing that intelligently. So I'm going to vote green on this, but I just hope that we have the conversations and work with the technologists so that we do get the data centers here instead of coming up with a one-sided approach that maybe misses some of the gains on both sides.
I recognize the member from Ramsey, Representative Hollins.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, members. I want to be really brief on this. You know, I think there's a billion reasons to support this. I support our labor, brothers and sisters. I am not anti-data centers. I think there's a great letter that was sent around that has some really good environmental concerns that we should all be thinking about from MCEA. But the reason that I'm going to be a no on this bill is because I am anti-tax breaks for billionaires. When we are saying that we are trying to incentivize people to come to our state to build these facilities, we are saying that the tax burden is going to lie on our constituents. Not just my constituents, all of our constituents. We know that there are increased resources that are needed to build these data centers, to maintain these data centers, to use the environmental resources that we all love. And it's going to cost money. And the people who are coming here to build data centers have money. These are the richest people in the world. They do not need our tax breaks. It is fiscally irresponsible for us to be providing tax breaks to people who could otherwise pay these bills. We talk a lot about fiscal responsibility in this body, in this room, and I cannot square those conversations with this decision. We had Amazon in our building lobbying us hard. Amazon, Amazon, Jeff Bezos, Amazon. He does not need a tax break. Who needs a tax break? People in my district who are struggling to be able to pay their property taxes. People in your district that are struggling to be able to afford food, who can't maintain our library systems, who can't maintain our schools. But in this moment, when we need resources more than ever, we are looking at billionaires and saying, you don't have to pay. It's okay. Don't worry about it. We want you to come here so bad, so, 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 so bad, totally ignoring the fact that there are a billion reasons that they actually want to come here, reasons that are outside of our control, reasons like our climate, the fact that it's cold, and they don't have to cool the data centers, reasons like our 100% effort because they like the fact that we are building our clean energy infrastructure. These people are coming regardless of whether or not we give them tax breaks. This is fiscally irresponsible, and I can't do this to my constituents. So I am a no. Thank you.
I recognize the member from Todd, Representative Weiner.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, Chair Davids, for bringing this bill. And thank you for a single-subject bill. Omnibus bills are kind of the bane of my existence, and so when we see single-subject bills, I appreciate that. Before I was on the Energy Committee, I guess I didn't understand fully how big the race to AI really was. I can compare it to, in the 1960s, obviously it wasn't around, but the race to the moon. We are in a race right now for AI, and the data centers are a critical part of this. Unfortunately, in our state, we have regulations and tax codes which end up driving businesses and industries out of our state, make us uncompetitive. Was mentioned before, the state of North Dakota is looking at pulling billions of dollars of investment into their state. Well, we are looking at driving billions of dollars out with our tax code and regulations. We know that in the future, jobs and so forth are going to revolve more and more around AI and data centers. We need to bring more of these businesses into our state. We need to clean up our tax code and our regulations so that we can appeal to people to bring their businesses here so that we can keep younger people in our state. We have lost an incredible amount of 18 to 35 years old because of lost opportunities. So thank you for bringing this bill forward, Chair Davids. I will be voting yes.
The member from Sherburne, Representative Mecklen.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Excuse me. So on the data center issue, Chair Acom, you were right. We do have more work to do. I totally do agree with that. And hopefully, we can spend the next year resolving a few of these unresolved issues, particularly, I have good news for Representative Hollins that seems to have an issue with Amazon. They have officially backed out based on this deal. And that was the one data center that was coming to my district, which has been a long five-, six-year fight. With the onset of Sherco going away, there's a significant financial hole to fill to the county, the city, and the school. This would have done that, and that is now gone. So I'm not saying they're all going. Several of them are agreeing to these terms. I don't think the certificate of need was too much to ask, in my opinion, as those, there's some members who have concerns about the large power consumption that they have. And for those that do do backup generation, the utility has the ability to have them get off at peak demand times and get on their backup generation to free up the rest of the grid. This seems like a logical solution. The certificate of need is more used when a utility wants to create more capital investment. They have to show that they really, truly need it because it affects our rates. These companies are wanting to spend millions of dollars on generators to protect their billions of dollars in equipment because they simply can't shut down. We've toured a data center where they explained what happens if they lose power. They have six minutes to figure it out and get those generators on. So for me, this is a pretty passionate one because it's been an ongoing thing with the eight host communities. And when we finally thought we were there, we come up with this one minor roadblock. They've agreed to all of this. They just needed that. And to say that they're not paying their fair share, as I mentioned before, there's a $5 million fee, which most of them will hit eventually as they build out. They all agreed to that. You took away the sales tax exemption for the energy, which is a very significant number. If you ask Excel, what will that amount to? They agreed to that. So we're not completely there. Several of them have said they will not. As Chair Davids mentioned, what was just announced, North Dakota landed a pretty big one. Congratulations to them. It sounds like Wisconsin's going to be getting a few more. But I'm disappointed in that we could not get this one other piece in there, and I've worked extensively, and Patty, you know that we've talked endlessly on this, and it's a frustrating thing for me on this. And now I have an entity which has not indicated they're going to sell the land right away. Maybe that's a good thing, or maybe they sit on it until they finally find a buyer, and now there's a piece of land that I can't even find something to put there. So I hope we can work this out soon in this interim and get back to this very early next session. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Any further discussion? To the bill author, Representative Davids.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And to Representative Mecklen, I hope I can be part of that over the interim to try and put this together for your community. As I was whipping the bill, I had Rep. Hollins as a maybe, but I guess she's probably not. I do need to correct the record, members. The first data center bill that I had was in 2011. I think I said 2001. It was 2011. Time flies when you're having fun. So with that, members, and Chair Acom, thank you for your support of the bill, and I think there are some pretty good guardrails here. And so that, members, I just really appreciate a green vote.
The clerk will take the roll. The clerk will call the name of the member participating remotely.
Olson.
House File 16, Olson votes yes.
Olson votes aye.
There being 85 ayes and 43 nays, the bill is passed and its title is agreed to. There is a motion at the desk. The clerk will report the motion.
Pursuant to Article 4, Section 19 of the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, Niska moves that the rule therein be suspended and an urgency be declared and that the rules of the House be so far suspended so that House File Number 17 be given its second and third readings and be placed upon its final passage.
I recognize the member from Anoka, Representative Niska, to explain the motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. House File 17 is the capital investment general obligation bonding bill that has been negotiated between all four caucuses as part of the agreement to have a special session today. I urge members to support the motion.
I recognize the member from Hennepin, Representative Long.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I also urge support.
All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. The motion prevails. The clerk will give the bill a second reading.
Second reading, House File Number 17.
Second reading. The clerk will report the bill.
House File Number 17, an act relating to capital investment.
I recognize the author of the bill from Hennepin, Representative Lee F.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members, House File 17 is actually the general fund capital investment bill that has a net general fund total of $6.5 million. And with that cancellation from previous years, the total of the bill that will be before us is $10.5 million. The spending reflects priorities of both sides of the aisles, as you will see in the spreadsheet that's being passed around or has been sent to you via email from nonpartisan staff. Some of these line items are ineligible for GO bonds, and that's why they're in the general fund bill. I just wanted to know, as you go through the spreadsheet, that there's a cancellation of the 2023 skate park grants to the Amateur Sports Commission, and that we also repealed the program because it has not been successful in awarding grants. And then the project lists out some of these different projects that are shovel-ready that has government buying and commitment. With that, Madam Chair, I'll turn it over to, I believe, Chair Koznick.
I recognize the member from Dakota, Representative Koznick.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. Kind of lost the bet here. I thought we'd be on this bill about 6:30 a.m., so we're doing really good on time. And I thought I'd just read the 41-page bill for everybody since we have that much time. But since that doesn't seem to be a popular motion, I just want to say that this is a good bill. I've been around a little bit, and this is the way we should do bonding, is just a pure bill, fund the programs and the needs of the state of Minnesota, take out a lot of the politics. So I think Chair Lee and the committee for the work and the staff that they've done. So this is a good, clean bonding bill that addresses the needs of Minnesota across the state. It's been a pleasure to work on the committee and in the working group. It has $86.5 million for transportation, and that's kind of why I was on the committee, and includes funding for our local roads, township roads, local bridges, and highway, railroad grade crossings. And that was something we were trying to do in our other transportation bill, but we got it done here. $206 million for water projects across the state, and $60 million is allocated to address deferred maintenance at state colleges, supporting safe and functional learning environments. So, members, I'm happy to support this bill and encourage your yes vote.
There is an amendment at the desk. The clerk will report the amendment.
All right, I lost two bets now. This is the cash bill. Chair Lee explained it a little bit. Go ahead and vote on the cash bill, too.
The clerk will report the amendment on House File 17.
Lee F. moves to amend, House File Number 17. The amendment is coded A3.
I recognize the author of the amendment, Representative Lee F.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members, the A3 amendment is an amendment that is agreed to by our leads on the committee and also our leadership. So the A3 amendments look at the appropriations that we have for the city of Minneapolis for the Center for Communication and Development appropriation. The original language had this as a grant to the city of Minneapolis to acquire land and pre-design of a new building to be leased to the Center for Communication and Development, but we found out that the center already has a purchase agreement in place, and so we need this amendment so that the city could help the grant, the center with a grant for pre-design and construction, and I urge your support. Thank you.
Discussion to the amendment. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of the amendment say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails, and the amendment is adopted. There are no further amendments at the desk. The clerk will give the bill its third reading as amended.
Third reading, House File Number 17, as amended.
Third reading. Discussion to the bill. Representative Koznick.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and apologize for our earlier mistake, but the cash bill is only 14 pages, so we do have time to read that one. Is that okay? No, it's not. Members, I urge you to vote on the cash bill if you so choose. Thank you for the work on the committee.
Further discussion to the bill. I recognize the author, Representative Lee F.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members, please vote green. Thank you.
The clerk will take the roll. The clerk will call the name of the member participating remotely.
Olson. Olson.
The clerk will close the roll. There being 96 ayes and 34 nays, the bill as amended is passed and its title is agreed to. There is a motion at the desk. The clerk will report the motion.
Pursuant to Article 4, Section 19 of the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, Niska moves that the rule therein be suspended and an urgency be declared and that the rules of the House be so far suspended so that House File Number 18 be given its second and third readings and be placed upon its final passage.
I recognize Representative Niska to explain the motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. Representative Koznick, sorry for leading you astray on the last bill, and thank you, Representative Lee, for correcting that. This one is the general obligation bond bill, but I urge members to support the motion so we can take it up and get it passed and get our work done.
I recognize a member from Hennepin, Representative Long.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I urge members' support so long as Representative Koznick doesn't read the bill.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Aye.
The motion prevails. The clerk will give the bill a second reading.
Second reading, House File Number 18.
Second reading. The clerk will report the bill.
House File Number 18, an act relating to capital investments.
I recognize the author from Hennepin, the author of the bill, Representative Lee, to explain the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. So this is the GO bill, and so we just wanted to quickly just give a highlight of the bill for all of us. You know, both bills this year was a product of bipartisan compromise, something that's always been the case for successful bonding bills in the past. This bill is no exception, investing in communities and projects throughout the state of Minnesota, projects that would only become more expensive if we went another year without a bonding bill. Instead of prioritizing new or local projects, this bill takes care of the state's existing infrastructure, ensure our colleges, campuses, state and regional parks, libraries, and other public facilities do not fall into despair. Some just notable highlights, just want to highlight the investment that we make into housing. This year, we have significant dollars into public housing rehabilitation. We have $3 million for the Greater Minnesota Manufacturer Housing Program, Parks and Trees. We have some significant investment into the DNR for asset preservation that's across the entire state of Minnesota. And then we have investment into reforestation that's, you know, I know it's important for my colleagues on the other side. And then we also have some funding in here for tree plantings for our side of the aisle. And then for mental health, we have significant funding in there for health and well-being, and I think Vice Chair Frederick will be talking to that piece a little bit after this. And so we just wanted to say thank you all to our members for the work this year as we move forward and urge your support. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
There is an amendment at the desk. The clerk will report the amendment.
Torkelson moves to amend, House File Number 18. The amendment is coded A2.
I recognize the member from Brown, Representative Torkelson, to explain the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This is a similar amendment to the Lee amendment to the cash bill. It'll make a couple of projects much more easily completed, one in Alexandria and another one in Redwood Falls. I urge a green vote on the amendment.
Discussion to the amendment. I recognize Representative Lee.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. So this amendment exempts the two projects from the B3 requirements. I know that, you know, for our side of the aisle, B3 is really important, but for these projects to really move forward, I think that we should support the amendment, and I am supportive of the amendment. And so, member, encourage your green vote on the amendment. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of the amendment say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Aye.
The motion prevails and the amendment is adopted. There are no further amendments at the desk. The clerk will give the bill its third reading.
Third reading, House File Number 18, as amended.
Third reading. Discussion to the bill. I recognize a member from Blue Earth, Representative Frederick.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just want to thank Chair Lee and Chair Franzen. It's been the position of the House the entire time in these negotiations to make sure funding for the Miller Building at the Anoka Metro Regional Treatment Center has been included. It's been a bit of a dance in that $55 million is in the bonding bill, but 20 million is in the Human Services Bill along with the operating adjustment starting in 2029. For those that aren't familiar or maybe don't serve on the Human Services Committee, people that are civilly committed in our states, they end up going to either St. Peter or Anoka, but they're out of beds. And what does that mean? It means that people are sitting in jails, they're sitting in hospitals for weeks and weeks, perhaps months and months, without being able to go to a facility to get the needs, to get the treatment that they need and deserve. So what this does is it will demo a building at Anoka and build it, so we will increase our safety net, right? Because Anoka and St. Peter is the end of the road, right? And so we are expanding our safety net in the state of Minnesota with the goal of getting everyone out of our jails, which is a priority for our county, for every county sheriff across the state. It's a priority for every county attorney across the state, and this will achieve that goal, and I urge members' support. Thank you.
I recognize a member from Dakota, Representative Koznick.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Line 1.1, a bill for an act relating to capital investment authorizing spending to acquire and better public lands. And that's all I'm going to read because that's all you need to know. This is a good bill that helps better public land and buildings for the state of Minnesota in doing the maintenance work and programs that we need to do across the state. And so, members, I do urge your green vote for this bill, and I think the committee and our staff, especially Chelsea Axelson and Joe Marble and the nonpartisan Karina, as well as the DFL staff, and I appreciate the work that I got to see firsthand with the Senate, DFL, and GOP, and was proud to do the work and also the rest of the committee. So please vote green.
Any further discussion to the bill? I recognize the author, Representative Lee.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, members. To close off, I just want to say thank you to our nonpartisan staff, Chelsea Griffin, who's here, Andy Lee, I think he's here in the back alcove, and then Jeff Case for the Revisers Office. And then just to the partisan staff from the GOP side, thank you to Karina Nelson, who is my seatmate in the committee room, the CLA for Chair Franzen, Chelsea Axelson, who's the GOP researcher, and then Joe Marbles, who is the GOP committee administrator. And then on our side, Tenzin Sayang, my committee legislative assistant, Evelyn Weiner, who is our DFL researcher, and then our invaluable committee administrator, Jenny Nash. To members of the committee, I really want to say thank you for all of your work this session in hearing the numerous bills that we have from members and from the different communities from across the entire state of Minnesota as they came forward. Just want to say thank you to both Vice Chair Fogelman and Vice Chair Frederick for stepping in to help support Chair Franzen and myself when we were not able to be there or we were attending to other engagements. So just want to say thank you both for your work, and, you know, members, really look forward to going on the bonding tours with all you as we head into the fall. And so, really just want to say thank you to Chair Franzen, too, who may not be in here, but if you did not know, Chair Franzen had a rap that she had ready for floor action tonight, and unfortunately, we will have to wait until the next bonding bill for us to hear her rap for us on the House floor. And so, members, with that, just want to say I really urge your support for this really balanced bill that, you know, really reflect the entire needs of the state of Minnesota. Chair Koznick mentioned earlier, we made significant investment into water to help our communities who are facing water issues across the entire state of Minnesota, and we made significant investment into our transportation system, whether that's highways or roads and bridges. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members, vote green. Thank you.
The clerk will take the roll. The clerk will call the name of the member participating remotely.
Olson.
The clerk will close the roll. There being 116 ayes and 15 nays, the bill is passed as amended and its title is agreed to. There is a motion at the desk. The clerk will report the motion.
Pursuant to Article 4, Section 19 of the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, Niska moves that the rule therein be suspended and an urgency be declared that the rules of the House be so far suspended so that House File Number 9 be given its second and third readings and be placed upon its final passage.
I recognize a member from Anoka, Representative Niska, to explain the motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. This is the tax bill, and I urge members to support so we can finish our work. Thank you.
I recognize the member from Hennepin, Representative Long.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I also urge support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Aye.
The motion prevails. The clerk will give the bill its second reading.
Second reading, House File 9.
Second reading. The clerk will report the bill.
House File Number 9, an act relating to taxation, modifying individual income tax, corporate franchise taxes, et cetera.
I recognize the member from Fillmore, Representative Davids, to explain the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. The moment you've all been waiting for, the 2025 tax bill's name is from a Beatles song, "We Can Work It Out." And we were very, very successful in that quest. We did work it out. Now, I've never had quite the path I've had to take to get a tax bill done before, but we were able to do it. First of all, I'd like to thank Chair Gomez for all her work. Chair Gomez, I really enjoy working with you. I think we did a very, very good job on this tax bill. Our target was a negative $308 million. How we took care of that was we took the sales tax exemption for electricity from data centers that raised 125 million. We increased the gross receipts tax on cannabis from 10 to 15, that was 146 million. We put in there research and development funds of 80 million. And then we did the sustainable aviation fuel technical correction in the bill. We did the technical correction so that we could carry some of those funds forward. We did not add any new funds to SAF. I was hoping that we'd be able to do that. We did make some cuts to aquatic invasive species aid. We cut sustainable forest initiative payments 10%, and I think that's a very important number because by doing that, we didn't break any of the contracts that we had with the landowners in northern Minnesota. So there should be no snowmobile trails being shut down or bike trails being shut down or anything like that. That was very important. I think one of the most important parts, or several parts, that are very, very important to this tax bill, just so you know, we did not cut local government aid at all. So you can go to your mayors, and you can go to your city councils and tell them that you did not cut local government aid. We did not cut county program aid. I thought that was very, very important. The governor's office and the Senate in their original bills had some pretty substantial cuts to local government aid and county program aid. This bill does not cut those. We did not cut pill payments at all, payment in lieu of taxes. And so, members, you can go through the bill. Those are some of the major highlights. We did quite a few of the, I shouldn't say smaller issues, but I guess they'd have to be considered smaller issues. We did appurtenances and attachments. We've been trying to do that for, I think, about four years. The department supported that. And of course, my favorite, one of my favorites is we took care of the LGA penalty forgiveness for the city of Stewart. Very, very important. And so with that, we did a few other things. There was a Franzen bill to employer student loans paid by critical access dental clinics, giving some forgiveness there, which I think is very, very important for dental clinics that take Medicare or Medicaid patients. That will help them. So overall, I think it's a very, very good bill. I'm going to turn it over to the co-chair, Gomez.
I recognize a member from Hennepin, Representative Gomez.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and my thanks to my co-chair, Greg Davids. He just covered the bill pretty well, the highlights of it. I think that there are things that people will find that they like in this and things that people will find that they don't like, and that's the nature of the work that we're doing this year. I think it was a good choice for us to repeal the electricity exemption for data centers, you know, that goes to the largest tech companies in the world. We did do R&amp;D refundability, which is a bad design for a corporate tax credit, but we limited its growth, which is one of the dangers when you add refundability, where you are paying companies, you know, kind of money that exceeds their tax liability. So, you know, he talked about a lot of kind of smaller tax policy items, low and no-cost items that are in the bill, and I look forward to a good conversation. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
There is an amendment at the desk. The clerk will report the amendment.
West moves to amend, House File Number 9. The amendment is coded A25-0098.
I recognize the member from Anoka, Representative West, to explain the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The A25 amendment puts a sunset on the 50% increase to the cannabis tax. And I'd say this is pretty important. It's, imagine the frustration. Cannabis has been legalized, but there's a hopelessly convoluted regulatory structure. Then the next year, the structure gets completely changed and put into a lottery with obvious problems. Then that lottery generates a lawsuit, which we knew was going to happen, which cancels the lottery and delays the whole market. And while these people are hoping to start a new business, while we're trying to rectify the ills of the past, the tax rate on those businesses goes up by 50%. The least we could do, the least we could do, is sunset this tax. I mean, a higher tax rate on cannabis encourages the black I mean, a higher tax rate on cannabis encourages the black market by, people are currently getting their weed on the black market. We want them to do a safe, tested, regulated store that generates tax revenue. A higher tax rate only encourages the black market. It hurts our breweries, which sell THC beverages, and it hurts our liquor distributors and our liquor stores who generate a significant amount of their revenue from THC beverages. So I would say we should, we should do a sunset. There is a global agreement, and I've talked to some folks on the other side of the aisle and realized there is not a path to do this, unfortunately, because of the global agreement. And Governor Walz's original cannabis proposal did have a 15% tax rate, and now he's seen his opportunity to levy that. Okay, I guess that's what has to be done. I won't vote for it. But what I would encourage, because I've already talked to some folks and realized this amendment is not going to pass, I would encourage us to consider this for next year. Because even folks who don't necessarily support cannabis, a higher tax rate increases the negative impacts of it. A lower tax rate puts us in a much better position. So don't want to waste anybody's time, more than I already have. So I will withdraw this amendment so that we do not have a negative vote on this, but we should do it next year.
Representative West withdraws his amendment. There are no further amendments. The clerk will give the bill its third reading.
Third reading, House File Number 9.
Third reading. Discussion to the bill. I recognize the member from Hennepin, Representative Lee. Actually, I recognize the member from Ramsey, Representative Lee Kay.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I didn't know we would get to this so fast, but yeah, I'm just rising tonight to encourage members to also vote green on the bill despite some of its flaws. There are also very good provisions in this bill that will help Minnesotans in every corner of our state. So I want to thank the co-chairs of Team House for working with me to include one of these provisions, which is my bill to create a fraud restitution fund that will compensate Minnesotans who have been scammed by fraudsters. Last year, we know that Minnesotans lost at least $120 million to fraudsters through various schemes that have become easier and easier to fall victim to because of the explosion of the internet and all of the new innovations that have arrived with it. And so I'm glad that in this divided House, our ARP members were able to organize and meet with their representatives, both Republicans and Democrats, to make this new restitution fund a bipartisan idea and create an easier path for passage. But while this is a very good part of the bill, and there are other good parts that I know various members have gotten for their districts, I do want to point out that we could have done more in this bill for the people of Minnesota. And so it should come as no surprise that I'm disappointed we could not raise more revenue in House File 9 for some of the, from some of the wealthiest corporations to fund important things in our communities. Things like a direct file program to help Minnesota families pay their taxes for free and not be bombarded with ads as they're trying to do their civic duty. Or a baby bonus, which is an idea from Representative Hanson that was also bipartisan, to try to mitigate the high cost of starting a family and sparing economic development as we heard during debate on the jobs bill. Instead, we raised revenues and then we're giving away nearly $80 million in new dollars to some of the largest corporations through the R and D credit, which we also made refundable. And for folks, that means that if a company offshores their profits but keeps their losses here, they get free money back from taxpayers across Minnesota. That's not a really good proposition as we head towards what everyone's been talking about, a structural deficit in future years. So I think this is a really important, important point to make that, you know, because our colleagues across the aisle chose not to raise revenues, more revenues to pay for critical programs, this, it's just, it's lost upon me why this bill gives more money to corporations that don't need it. And the other important tie that I want to bring us back to before we leave today is we started today, we started this special session with House File 1, which takes away healthcare for undocumented neighbors. And we heard earlier in that debate that if we didn't pass House File 1, property taxes would increase and that this was a fiscally responsible thing to do. But that was never a causal relationship that, or an argument that would hold up. I bring this up again because cities and counties will still feel the pressure to increase property taxes. This is a third area where we could have raised more revenues to increase county program aid, commonly known as CPA, and also local government aid to our cities, LGA, to mitigate property tax increases. Or we could have increased refunds for Minnesota families who do pay property taxes. We have a property tax refund program where you pay your money to the county and the state reimburses you. But because people who call themselves leaders at the legislature refuse to lead and make corporations pay for their fair share, the can has been kicked down the road to our local governing partners, whose only governing tool is to increase lobbies. So hopefully when folks go home, they don't say they didn't increase taxes on their constituents because that's not true. Because what they did is they chose not to make this decision and they chose not to lead. House File 9 is a good bill that we were able to work out. But as my colleagues have said earlier today, what's not in the bill is perhaps the most important thing about the legislation we've been passing. At a time when oligarchs have taken over our federal government, we could be doing more for Minnesota families. And I want folks to understand just how hard our DFL team has fought to make this happen. Thank you.
I recognize the member from Hennepin, Representative Abaje.
Thank you, Speaker. So the tax bill this year is relatively small, particularly on major cost items. And as was stated, I think one of the major disappointments of this bill is that we weren't able to come together to figure out a way how to raise significant revenue. If we had, that might have made it a little simpler to figure out some of our thornier budget issues that we had that we've talked about today. I also think another continued frustration in bills like these is that oftentimes the winners are these large corporations that we've been talking about. But I am glad that we were able to limit some of the tax breaks and recoup some of the revenue to, from large corporations, like the repeal on the electricity exemption for data centers. And I also appreciate that the varied caps and guardrails we included on the R and D credit to ensure that this would not grow in a way that would harm our society. So common sense limitations like these are steps in the right direction to correctly engage with large corporations coming into Minnesota. And it's not that I believe that we shouldn't incentivize certain businesses and industries through tax breaks, but we really should think carefully about when and how we do that. When it's to mega corporations who already have the money to build and spend in Minnesota, there has to be other ways to entice those companies to build jobs, hopefully sustainable ones in our state. It's time to focus on investing in people who actually make these businesses run. And until then, we will continue to forego dollars that could have been used in ways to promote housing, promote education, promote healthcare, and more. And those are the kinds of characteristics that Minnesota is known for, and that's why people actually want to come to this state. The low and no cost items in this bill are an added benefit for many members and their districts. One that I will highlight is the Tax Expenditure Review Commission, whose charge is to review tax exemptions that we have in Minnesota. The purpose of the commission is to provide evaluations that will inform whether certain exemptions are still valuable and meeting its intended goals, that data can inform future legislatures on ways to close or even expand certain exemptions. So we were able to update that commission and make sure that it can run more efficiently. And though this bill doesn't go far enough, in my opinion, to help people, I'm sure my colleagues on the other side believe it doesn't go far enough to help corporations. So such is the compromises that we have in a divided government. And with that, I will still encourage members to vote for the bill.
I recognize a member from Todd, Representative Weiner.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Well, it's been a long day. Thank you. But I would like to, I would like to draw your attention to some wise words up here on the, on the wall. Third line down, it says, "No free government, or the blessings of liberty can be preserved to any people but by a firm adherence to justice, moderation, temperance, frugality, and virtue, and by a frequent recurrence to fundamental principles." It's written right above our heads, and we seem to ignore it. We have in this state since my first election raised spending by $17 billion. And we have to break that down because how does that affect your neighbor, your friends, your mom, your dad, every worker in this state? For every billion dollars of spending that we increase in this state, it's about $200 per man, woman, and child. But not everybody pays taxes. If you're under 18, if you're over 65, you probably don't pay a lot of taxes. So that $200 per billion basically goes to about 400. Now, if you times that by the $17 billion that the government has increased in spending over the last few years, you're looking at about $3,400 that every person is going to be paying for in this state. That word up there, frugality, should mean something to all of us. We owe it to the people in Minnesota here to take the money seriously. We owe them a government that's efficient, targeted, and results-driven. Sitting on the tax committee, I watch the projects, the goals, things that come through that people want. And I wonder, are we ever going to get back to frugality, those fundamental principles that our forefathers, the people that put us here, that survived the Great Depression, economic downturns, Second World War, so many things in history, and we are squandering it? We had the opportunity in the tax committee to get the surplus back. It's not our money. It's the people's money. And they could have spent it better than what we could have. Because now, as we've heard so many times from across the aisle, we didn't raise revenue. We didn't take enough of those taxpayers' money yet. We haven't gutted the hog. It is absolutely obscene that we're talking about raising revenues in this state after wasting $17 billion. What are we doing? Thank God for a, once again, a stripped-down tax bill. I appreciate that. A bill that would actually fit into the single line item again, or line item description. So once again, I appreciate that. But I came to, I came to the government to, I ran to represent the people in my area to make their lives better. And if spending money was the solution, we would have hit utopia by now. But we haven't, and we never will. Because there's no, there's no freebies in life. You have to work for it. And government, when they just spend money that people don't have, creates an undue burden on the taxpayers of this state. And we see it when we drive people out. 20,000 people have left this state over the last few years. I want government to be efficient. I want the people in this state to trust that we are being frugal with their taxpayer dollars. I want trust in government again. But nothing erodes that trust faster than a government that taxes and spends without discipline, without frugality and without results. I don't know that we've been successful once again. I look at the wasted opportunities. Like I said, I am glad that the bill was stripped down, but I cannot wait for a much better bill in the future that we can actually improve the lives of the citizens in this state by letting them keep their hard-earned dollars instead of us grabbing them as fast as we can and distributing wealth to our pet projects that we see fit. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I recognize the member from Hennepin, Representative Robbins.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. I appreciate the work of the tax committee. I really do think it's the best committee and love working with Chair Davids and Chair Gomez. But this bill really misses the mark, and I am going to be a no vote, and I just wanted to kind of highlight the problems here. As we heard multiple times from our colleagues on the other side of the aisle, they see this as a miss because they quote, "missed opportunities to raise significant revenue." So what I want the public to understand is that we stopped $8 billion in tax increases because they wanted to create a new fifth-tier income tax and tax, a new sales tax on services. As people will probably recall, in the last biennium, the then majority of the Democrats spent the entire $18 billion surplus, and they raised taxes between 10 and 11 billion dollars. And we now have a $6 billion deficit. Revenue is not the problem. Spending is the problem, members. And in the tax bill, what we should have been trying to do is correct the mistakes from last biennium. In this bill, we had the opportunity to provide tax relief to small businesses who are struggling mightily. We had opportunity to provide tax relief to seniors and individuals, and none of that happened. And there was bipartisan work on this. Representative Norris and I worked closely together on a vendor allowance bill just to help small businesses who serve as the sales tax collector for the state keep a small portion of what they send into the state every year because it's really complicated and it costs them a lot of money to have to remit this to the state. Guess what we found out? A, we couldn't prioritize small businesses, and B, even though the small businesses who collect the tax for the state get nothing, the State Department of Revenue keeps $7 million because they have so many costs associated with distributing that money to state, to city governments. What? So we don't get a vendor allowance for the small businesses, but the department takes a cut. Members, we are not prioritizing the job creators, the people that drive economic growth in this state. And that's just one example. The other thing that we didn't prioritize, again, with great shame on this body, are the veterans. We had bipartisan bills to allow veterans and other charitable organizations to get a break on the charitable gaming tax, and veterans would have been able to use that money to just do upgrades to their legions and their VFWs. And that had strong bipartisan support. It didn't make the cut. We had another bill that if, for members who were here last session, you will remember this, we had a very heartfelt discussion on the floor of the House about a bill to increase the veterans homestead exclusion for disabled veterans. And it wasn't in the bill. It was offered by, as an amendment, by one of the members on your side of the aisle. In a very heartfelt discussion, Chair Gomez accepted that amendment. And we were going to finally do something for disabled veterans in the tax bill last year, that last session. That fell out in the conference committee, so we went back on our word. This year, we had that again in the conference committee, and it is not in here. Members, how many times are we going to go to the well and say we're making promises to veterans in the tax bill and not do it? So I appreciate the work that's got into this bill. I appreciate that we did not raise $8 billion in taxes on Minnesotans. I'm grateful for that. But we didn't do anything for small businesses and veterans, and it's very disappointing.
I recognize a member from Anoka, Representative West.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Keep this short, it's late, but one, I expect a thank you note from many of you. Blaine gets a total of $0 of LGA. Let's see here, Columbus, $0 of LGA, and Ham Lake, $0 of LGA. So you're welcome from my constituents to yours for the transfer of wealth and the 600-some million dollars we do in LGA. Two, won't hammer it home, but the increase in the cannabis tax, not a good idea, especially when the market's just starting, and a lot of these companies that do THC hemp-derived beverages also are going to have to pay this tax, making them uncompetitive. making them uncompetitive when compared to other states, which is legalized elsewhere. And lastly, the cannabis tax had a dedication to cities, which is no longer in existence. And a lot of cities believed that they were going to receive that money to deal with regulating cannabis, which they are required to do. And, you know, for my cities, it's $0, $0, $0. And the money you thought you were going to get, you're not going to get. So I know a lot of other members here are in this similar boat. We don't need a tax bill to fund government, so it's not like there's any shutdown potential. So I think it would be wonderful if members would vote red on this bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
I recognize a member from Hennepin, Representative Gomez.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So first, Chair Davids has deputized me to do some thank-yous on behalf of both of us. And we want to just first thank the members of our committee. And he wants to thank me for my kindness, generosity, beauty, wit, et cetera, et cetera. We want to thank our vice chairs, Norris and Joy, all of the folks who participated in the work group. Representative Agbadje, Representative Joy, Representative Norris, Representative Lee, our amazing revisers, Maureen Sandy and Evan Powell, our House Research and Fiscal staff who are here, Sean Williams, Chris Kleiman, Justin Cope, Jared Swanson, Alex Hagler, Katrina Highmark, and Cynthia Templin. I just want to take a second about our nonpartisan staff. Under the best of circumstances, especially our House Research and House Fiscal have very, very difficult jobs. You know, they take the confidentiality and discretion of their positions very seriously. They basically never say no to any of our requests. And what I discovered when I was a chair in the majority was how much you work with your nonpartisan staff every day, day in, day out. And what our nonpartisan staff have been dealing with this session, unlike every other session, is basically two majorities making those kind of asks of them and those kind of demands of them. And with the additional kind of directive that they hold so sacred of keeping our trust and our confidence and, you know, always being even-handed and always being fair and always being aware of, you know, information not crossing over those invisible boundaries. And, you know, I know that our tax staff have just done an exemplary job of that. And I know that that's true across our entire House Research and House Fiscal departments. And so we're just so thankful to you all and understand the additional burden of this session and that it fell really, really hard on those, you know, kind of core, nonpartisan staff for us. And so you have earned the break that is coming. Our pages are Joe Schatz and Clara Eichden, Sean Hadorn and Jacob Cowan are our partisan researchers. Our CLAs, Shamatt and Jennifer. And of course, our CA's, Patrick McQuillan, who has just been on a really kind of wild path with us, as has Sam Moyer, over the last several weeks. And so we're just deeply grateful. We all know we can't do anything without our staff. There are different philosophical approaches, I think, to taxes and to tax bills. And it's become really evident to me in the last few weeks that politicians in both parties, many politicians in both parties, really view tax bills as mechanisms for handing out tax breaks and tax advantages and tax giveaways to their own sort of specially-selected audience. And a lot of times, almost without fail, the people who are receiving the tax giveaways in a tax bill are, you're going to be shocked, corporations, the wealthy, the powerful, the many, many special interests that hire lobbyists who come three days a week to tax committee and sit there day in, day out, month after month, come to the work groups. Those are the interests that show up to shape our tax policy. And a lot of us on both sides view tax bills and view the tax code as the place to give out those benefits, those advantages, those goodies. And it's interesting to me, you know, that people who are up in arms about fiscal discipline and the budget and deficits and have lots of questions about how we're going to pay for things when we're talking about investing in the public good, when we're talking about investing in the people of this state in good schools for everybody, in a clean environment, in infrastructure that's built by union labor, they have a lot of questions about how we're going to pay for those things. How we're going to pay for healthcare, for example. So we were told earlier that this issue of taking healthcare from tens of thousands of Minnesotans is not cruelty. It's not inhumanity. It's not a decision that violates the most basic moral code that each of us are called to by our religion or by our upbringing or by our allegiance to our community and our ancestors and the people who got us here. No, no, it's not that. It's about the budget. It's not about the cruelty, it's about the budget. Well, watch. Watch what happens when the question is not how to fund a school, how to make sure somebody who has cancer can get treatment for their cancer. Watch when the question is, can we afford a subsidy for this corporation? Can we do a sales tax exemption for this favored group, for this company, for this corporation? Watch how those objections about the sanctity of fiscal responsibility dissolve into nothing and melt away. So a lot of people look at a tax bill as a goodie train for their faves. They're only going to ask questions about how you pay for the goodies if you don't like where they're going. But there's another way to think about a tax bill. There's another way to think about a tax code, that it can be an expression of our values and a way to provide for the public good and a way for us to care for each other when we live in a society together. So, you know, minimizing giveaways in the tax code and protecting the tax base and not eroding it with endless corporate subsidies and, you know, chipping away at the tax base. It's not the intention of a tax bill. We're here to fund the public good. And so by that metric, by the metric of is this a tax bill that's filled with giveaways to the people with the best lobbyists? This is a pretty good tax bill. Because there was a lot of proposals from both sides, again. Giveaways to the Professional Golf Association, to sports teams, like every sports team you can imagine. NCAA ticket sales tax exemption, Big Ag, Delta Aviation, Amazon, Google, Facebook. There was a lot of proposals that would have eroded the tax base, that would have created unsustainable tax benefits that would just pass off into the future. And we didn't do that in this bill. And so Representative Weiner and I kind of agree a little bit on this bill. And the fact that it's a simple bill is good. And you were looking over there to thank them for the simple bill, but you should be looking over this way to thank somebody for the simple bill. I'm just saying. I'm sure you'll make it up to me. So this is a simple bill. It raises some money. It fixes some problems in the tax bill. It doesn't do a lot of property tax shifts, you know? It minimizes giveaways. It leaves us in a better position to fund the public goods that each of our residents count on. And for that reason, I hope that you'll support it. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
I recognize a member from Anoka, Representative Niska.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. As we close the book on the 2025 legislative session, one of the most unusual in Minnesota history, it's important that we take a clear-eyed look back before we chart our path forward. This session began with a 23-week delay. For more than three weeks, Democrats refused to show up. And when they finally showed up, they picked up right where they went left off. Doubling down on tax hikes.
Parliament inquiry, Madam Speaker.
State's point of parliamentary inquiry.
Madam Speaker, I do not hear a bill that we are currently debating. Can you remind the body what bill we are on?
To remind the body, we are on the final passage of House File 9. Representative Niska.
Doubling down on tax hikes and the other same failed policies that pushed Minnesota to the brink. Let's not forget, two years ago, Democrats had total control and they burned through an $18 billion surplus, raised taxes by over $10 billion, and drove Minnesota into a projected $6 billion deficit. And this year, they expected Minnesotans to foot the bill for their fiscal recklessness by just raising taxes over and over again. But House Republicans stood firm. We stood united against every Democrat attempt to raise taxes on hard-working Minnesota families. After $10 billion in tax hikes just two years ago, enough is enough. We held the line. We also put a stop to the onslaught of one-size-fits-all mandates that Democrats tried to impose on schools, cities, local governments, and small businesses. Mandates that have done real damage. Unfunded mandates that have devastated school budgets and forced painful cuts. And yes, will force property tax hikes, as we heard from Democrats advocating for this bill. Costly regulations that made it harder for Main Street businesses to stay open, hire workers, and grow. And mandates on local governments that helped drive property taxes higher across Minnesota. And Democrats' solution to all of that? Raise taxes. Just keep raising taxes. But House Republicans fought back, and we made real progress because Minnesotans deserve local control, flexibility, and a state government that makes life easier, not more expensive. With a House evenly split 67-67, House Republicans delivered a responsible budget deal that eliminates nearly half the projected deficit and delivers the largest reduction in government spending in state history without raising taxes on Minnesota families. We did it while protecting and investing in the things Minnesotans care about, like schools, hospitals, law enforcement, and public infrastructure. We reduced the size of government without compromising the core services Minnesotans counted on. And we tackled the fraud, waste, and abuse that have siphoned nearly $1 billion from Minnesota taxpayers under a culture of complacency under one-party Democrat control. We could have done more. We could have done more. A Republican majority would do more. But with 67 House Republicans, when Democrats tried again and again to raise taxes, Republicans said no and protected Minnesota families and their paychecks. When Democrats pushed for more mandates, more red tape, more government overreach, House Republicans stood strong and focused on what matters most to Minnesotans and their families. When House Republicans have a seat at the table, Minnesotans have a voice. Taxpayers have a voice. Families have a voice. Your schools have a voice. Main Street Minnesota has a voice. And the forgotten men and women of Minnesota finally have a voice. We proved that even in a tied House, it's possible to deliver real results. And we don't just have to keep taxing Minnesotans more and more. We can do it better. We will do better. House Republicans will keep fighting for accountability, for common sense, and for a government that understands Minnesota's struggles, shares their values, and works as hard as they do. Thank you.
I recognize the author of the bill, Representative Davids.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I would like to just go over a couple of things quickly. Chair Robbins made a comment about the disabled veterans. And I think you said something like, "shame on us," or something. Chair Gomez was gracious enough to accept that provision in our bill. We accepted that. I think it's kind of a shame on that other body would be a little bit more appropriate there. So I delegated thanking everyone to Chair Gomez, and she did a great job. But I have to just have a couple of thank-yous of my own. And like you said, nonpartisan is just amazing. Patrick, Sean, Shamatt, so good to work with, so good to work with. And then when it comes over here, Jennifer Goblerch, Jacob, and Sam, thank you. You've done an awesome job for us. You really have. And one other thank you, Vice Chair Joy. You were awesome on the committee. Just really appreciate your help. So with that, I would just, hopefully, we can vote green on this one.
The clerk will call the name of the member participating remotely.
Olson.
House File 9, Olson votes yes.
Olson votes no.
It's really hard to hear in here.
Members, if you could take your conversations to the alcoves, it's a little hard to hear.
Olson.
House File 9, Olson votes yes.
Olson votes aye.
The clerk will close the roll. There being 93 ayes and 39 nays, the bill is passed and its title is agreed to. I recognize the member from Hennepin, Representative Long.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. We are waiting on the corrections bill, our final bill of the night. And in the time that we have before the bill arrives, Representative Niska and I wanted to just take a minute to thank our incredible staff. We cannot do the work that we do in this building and outside of this building without the support of so very many from the pages who are running around right now, who make our sessions and committees work, to legislative assistants who manage every part of our offices, to committee administrators who ensure our committees are working well and are welcoming to the public, to the many more who serve our caucuses to help us dive deep into policy issues and to share messages with Minnesotans, including DFL and GOP research, media, constituent services, information technology, and our leadership staff. There are so many that provide structure to this institution and hold us all together as well, including our staff in human resources, supply, House Public Information Services, House Photography, Facilities and Maintenance, Budget and Accounting, and the
with a 45-minute break during this 12-plus-hour special session. We really, really appreciate it. I want to name a few names, including some that don't often get named. Corey Strand, Morgan Khan, Angela Starkey-Smelzer, Matty Ryan, Dana Buoyold, Austin Turman, Tim Steemig, Neuma Jagana, Fozzy Abdi, Carl Hammer, Jeremy Johnson, Jarrett Legreed, Connor Beckel, Mike Spiker, Jordan Watts, Deanna Renelt, John King, Peter Moran, Lynn Sulman, Chi Vang, Katana Kang, Jorge Mendoza, Kathy Carlson, Merrily Davis, Nishari Avio, And apologies to all of those whose names I butchered, but we really, really appreciate all of your work. Thank you. Thank you so much. Members, please join me in thanking our Chief Clerk's Office and front desk staff and all of our members who serve this institution.
Message from the Senate. Madam Speaker, hereby now surpasses by the Senate the following Senate file, herewith transmitted. Senate File Number 9, the message assigned Thomas S. Bodden, Secretary of the Senate.
First reading of Senate files.
First reading, Senate File Number 9, an act relating to legislative enactments.
There's a motion at the desk. The clerk will report the motion.
Pursuant to Article 4, Section 19 of the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, Niska moves that the rule therein be suspended and an urgency be declared, that the rules of the House be so far suspended, so that Senate File Number 9 be given its second and third readings and be placed upon its final passage.
I recognize a member from Anoka, Representative Niska, to explain the motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. This is the Corrections Bill. It's the bill where the Revisers Office helps us catch any errors that might have happened in the drafting of the bills that we passed so far. It's a process that involves bipartisan sign-off, including the chairs of both committees and the chairs of the judiciary committees. And I urge members to support this so we can pass this and finish our work up for the night.
Discussion to the motion. I recognize a member from Hennepin, Representative Long.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I urge members' support of the motion.
There being no further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. The clerk will give the bill its second reading.
Second reading, Senate File Number 9.
Second reading. The clerk will report the bill.
Senate File Number 9, an act relating to legislative enactments.
I recognize the member from Olmsted, the author of the bill, Representative Liebling, to explain the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members, the moment you've all been waiting for. So we end our session with this humble little bill called the Corrections Bill. And I think the theme of this bill has to be, everybody makes mistakes. So, but that's not really accurate, because here at the legislature, those of you who are new, you really should listen up. This is important. Here at the legislature, the staff do not make mistakes. Let me say that again. Here at the legislature, the staff do not make mistakes. Mistakes are made by members. It's a privilege of being a member. You are the ones who make the mistakes around here. And so, we, not you, we, are the ones who have to correct the mistakes. But the staff do help us find the mistakes so that we can correct them. And so, that's what we're going to do in this little bill tonight. We are going to correct some mistakes. These are mistakes that were made this session, this session only. And I have a list of what's in the bill and which members made those mistakes. And if you have questions about them, we will ask the members who made those particular mistakes. But I think that we do have an amendment, Madam Speaker.
There is an amendment at the desk. The clerk will report the amendment.
Scott moves to amend, Senate File Number 9. The amendment is coded A250097.
I recognize a member from Anoka, Representative Scott, to explain the amendment.
I believe that this is just the latest iteration that was passed by the Senate and includes down to the last correction. So I think they were waiting on a few people to get signatures, and so I think that's, it's all done.
Any further discussion to the amendment? Representative Liebling.
Yeah, thank you, Representative Scott. So the base bill coming over from the Senate had some of the errors in it. The amendment adds some others that were caught more recently, so we would urge your support.
All those in favor of the amendment say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. The amendment is adopted. The clerk will give the bill its third reading.
Third reading, Senate File Number 9, as amended.
Third reading. Discussion to the bill. Representative Liebling.
Well, I don't see anybody who wants to get up and confess their particular mistake. So, and I see that Chair Scott wants to, maybe I'll let you have the last word on the bill, Chair Scott. So let me just say that, as you all may know, there's a process for this, as Representative Niska just explained, that the chairs all sign off on it. These are mistakes that are very technical. And so I know you're all giving it careful scrutiny, but if you don't, just know that a lot of us have, other people have. So I think you can feel quite confident in voting for this bill and just making sure that, to the extent possible, that the members are correcting their mistakes for the session. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
I recognize a member from Anoka, Representative Scott.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thanks, Representative Liebling, Chair Liebling. And I do notice on here that there were no errors on the judiciary bill. Did you notice that, Representative Liebling? All right, all right. That's awesome. So anyway, yeah, there were various small technical changes that needed to be made. They were identified. It's a one-pager, really, I mean, of the small explanations of what it is. So I encourage members to vote green.
The clerk will take the roll on the bill. The clerk will call the name of the member participating remotely.
Senate File 9, Olson votes yes.
Olson votes aye.
The clerk will close the roll. There being 132 ayes and zero nays, the bill is passed as amended and its title is agreed Motions and resolutions. There are copies of non-controversial motions at your desk and online. The clerk will report the motions. Hearing no objections on the non-controversial motions, the motions are adopted.
Mueller introducing House Resolution Number 1, expressing the sense of the Minnesota House of Representatives condemning President Trump's pardon of criminal participants of the January 6th insurrection who had been found guilty of violent crimes. The resolution is being referred to the Committee on Rules and Legislative Administration. Niska moves that the Chief Clerk be and is hereby instructed to correct and approve the Journal of the House for the 2025 Special Session for today, Monday, June 9, 2025, and that he be authorized to include in the Journal for today any subsequent proceedings.
Representative Niska.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. Well, we're going to wrap it up, and that means we have to let the Chief Clerk's Office do their work after we're done. So I urge members to support the motion.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, nay. The motion prevails.
Niska moves that the Chief Clerk be and is hereby instructed to inform the Senate and the Governor by message that the House of Representatives is about to adjourn the 2025 Special Session. Signee die.
Representative Niska, to your motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. And first, I want to note that there's not going to be any controversy about the pronunciation of signee die today. But yeah, we have to tell the other folks in the building. I apologize for the way this spelled out exactly in the motion, but other folks in the building need to be informed that we're about to do that because we're done with our work. So please support the motion.
All those in favor of the Niska motion say aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion prevails. Announcements, Representative Niska.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. I move that the House do now adjourn the Special Session. Signee die.
Representative Niska moves that the House do now adjourn the Special Session. Signee die. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The motion prevails, and the Special Session is adjourned. Signee die.